Good morning, everyone. Good morning to county staff, the citizens that are watching.
This conference will now be recorded.
My colleagues and everyone else across the, across the county here this morning, Thursday, December the 10th. We're going to start out with priority Carol as we typically do, but before that, we're going to rate, we're going to, what do we do? We stand for the pledge.
Pledge in middle of silence.
We stand for the pledge and also let's take a moment to reflect on, on, on what's going on around us with our moment of silence. Carroll Hospital and the, and the healthcare workers out there are exhausted, the place is jammed. Everywhere across the, the country, we're seeing huge upticks. As a matter of fact, yesterday has been declared the most deadly day that we've ever seen here in this country. We had more people die yesterday of COVID than were killed in nine 11. So this is, this is a serious situation that we're in and we have to be mindful of that. So please keep all of our folks on the front lines, everybody that's dealing with this pandemic and your thoughts as we, as we do our moment of silence. With that, we're going to rise for the pledge. I guess it's my turn. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Good morning once again. If anybody didn't, didn't see it, I want to make sure that everybody knows Commissioner Frazier has a Christmas mask on this morning. Okay?
I'm zooming on that.
So, so, so we're not, there's no zooming, we're not zooming on, on your mask, just pointing it out. So, okay.
Trying to keep it to spirit. God, it looks good.
All right. Let's go to priority Carol this morning and with priority Carol, I'm going to start this morning with Commissioner Ed Rothstein in District Five. Ed, good morning.
Great place to start. I got a few things to share and I attended the Governor's Workforce Development Board yesterday and the BWI Business Partnership Breakfast this morning. Again, sharing with you that we are reaching out to the region and to the state and our participation does matter. One comment during the Workforce Development Board yesterday that really resonated a lot, a lot of discussion, a lot of the different secretaries, the school administrator was there, had a lot of different conversations about how to keep the workforce going. But comment that resonated was this past year, no, a year ago, there were 9,300 that filed for unemployment in Maryland. And this was not in a virtual reality, this was them filing for unemployment. This past year, there was 39,000 that filed for unemployment and that was all virtual. So 9,300 to 39,000 difference. This is obviously a big challenge. I know they're doing the best they can. They're continuing to change their processes to be more supportive of those filing, but those numbers are just so dramatic when I, when I heard that. And I just wanted to share that with you. Let's see. We continue to say this is the, the season of giving. There's a lot of opportunities to give, whether it's helping out a neighbor, you know, or just in the community where it doesn't cost money. There's also Toys for Tots and Giving Trees with all the different, you know, churches and religious establishments. The Lions Club is always looking and along with a lot of other nonprofits are always looking to support our community and those less fortunate. So, you know, kind of dig into pockets and see what we can do to continue to give is what I ask. One thing that's pretty disturbing and we saw in the news about scammers and fraud happening in the county. This is happening and it's not just a single incident. There are multiple incidents that are happening in our county and in our community. I just share with you, you see something, say something, or if you hear of something, bring it to the police attention and let's, let's get this stuff under control. Cause unfortunately, the season of giving is also a season of where people take advantage of those that are vulnerable. And you know, there are scammers and frauds that are out there. So I just asked that we, we be a little bit more vigilant towards that. Couple last things. One, I continue to share leaders lead. You know, we don't call names, we don't use social media or other venues to, to share unwanted or unwarranted name calling or scandalous opinions. And the best thing we can do as leaders, as board commissioners that we are, is promote the good habits in getting through this pandemic, wearing the mask, minimizing the social gatherings and do what's right. Also doing what's right is shopping local. I really do applaud everything we're doing to help our businesses, but it's not going to end with just handing out money from the government to the businesses. It's going to be the community reaching out and shopping local and, and dining local. So I ask everyone do the best they can. And the last thing, a very happy Hanukkah for those that are celebrating the, this evening's the first night of Hanukkah. And as we move into again, the holiday season, wishing everybody a great, great December and great season. Thanks.
Thanks, Ed. Let's go up to District Two and say good morning to Commissioner Richard Weaver. Dick, good morning.
Good morning. Well, this is the holiday season, as you said, Ed, and the 2020 Holiday Tour featuring a socially distanced Santa is at the Farm Museum. And this past weekend, you know, they had a lot of children had their picture taken from six feet away, of course, with Santa and worked very well. And Santa will be at the Farm Museum from noon to four, this Saturday and Sunday. And he also, well, then he has to go back to North Pole for a while, but the other days, the Farm Museum is up, while the Farm Museum is open, they have the, you know, still have the children scavenger hunt, the playground and outside tour about sleighs and ice. So they have something to do for the weekend. If you have your kids or grandkids want to take them, it'd be a perfect time. This is a season of giving, as Ed said, and I just remind you, don't give COVID. Make sure you keep your mask on, wash your hands and keep your distance. But you know, this is a season we can give all the wrong things. And that wasn't a Grinch comment, Eric. And you know, Ed, you made a good comment here. Lead, don't disrupt. And that is part of our charge, I think, as commissioners in the county. And with the idea of giving locally, you know, from local businesses, remember a gift card from a local business helps them float or something like that. It's easy to get, you don't have to spend a lot of time shopping to do it, but it supports them. We have a lot of small restaurants, small businesses that can use a lot. If, you know, a hundred people give a gift card to it, that may be as good as a county grant. So that's all I have for today.
All right. Thank you, Dick. Let's head northwest and come into Westminster. Commissioner Frazier, morning.
Good morning. Always a good trip coming to Westminster. First thing I want to talk about, there's a board of Ed meeting last night and thank you, you can put it up. East Middle School was discussed and there was a, there's a plan for East Middle School. It's out there. They're getting more defined what they're looking for. They moved some things around. Do you have a picture of, of like from there? That would go back. Yeah, right there. That's, it's kind of hard to see, but that's the footprint of where East Middle School is going to be put now with parking and bus loops and all this other. So they're getting much closer now to the nuts and bolts of what they're actually going to do. And good news along with that is they're actually spec, specing out what some of this is going to cost. And the estimate right now is about half a million dollars less than was originally proposed. Let's hope it stays that way or maybe even keeps going in that direction. So it was really good news last night to getting closer for, for East Middle School. Staying along with the board of Ed meeting last night, they're going to start sports practices on 14th, I think it is, that'd be Monday. It's, it's coming up and they're staying in their small learning groups and the specialized programs are coming in. And in apparently unrelated topic, the COVID numbers in Carroll County are the highest they've ever been this past week. Hospitalizations at Carroll Hospital Center are maxed out. There's so many people in there that they even had to put off some, some surgeries. I'm sure they'll take them when they can, but because of bed space. So it's, you know, there are a lot of things are happening in Carroll County. Stay ever vigilant on wearing your mask and social distancing and washing your hands. I know it's, it's, you know, you hear it all the time. And why vaccine has been approved in Britain, hopefully a vaccine will be approved today in the United States. But even if the vaccine is approved today and then get it out within three days, which is the plan, people start getting vaccinations three days after it's, it's approved. That will not stem this wave that's going on right now in this winter. Some people said this is going to be the darkest winter of our lives and that's because of sunshine. So we, we have to keep vigilant on this. The vaccine is going to get out there. I have confidence that it will, but I really believe that until April, around April, March, somewhere in there, are we going to have, see positive effects from the vaccine as a, as a country? So just get the vaccine when it comes out. Let's move forward. It's, it's a light at the end of the tunnel, but it is at the end of the tunnel. It's not happening right now. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Dennis. And then we make a U-turn and head to Woodbine and say good morning to Commissioner Eric Boucher from District Four. Eric, good morning.
Thank you, Commissioner Lance. I want to start out by calling Commissioner Rothstein two names, generous and kind. And happy Hanukkah to you. I think you gave a wonderful message. Thank you very much. We also have the Charity of Hope Drive with paper. So if you're looking for an avenue to give a donation, you can go contact the paper through their link and do a charity charitable donation through them. One of their donations would be for the hospice. A lot of these organizations are stressed out right now. So I think that'd be a good opportunity to support those facilities that are dealing with and being directly impacted by this pandemic. And we'll go into shop local. Here we go. This weekend, my girlfriend and I took the time to start out in Mount Airy on downtown Main Street. Lots of little shop center and places. There's a photo that, that, then we went up to New Windsor to the farmer's market. So we start in the southern end of this district, did some shopping and we went to the farmer's market. I really love the farmer's market. There's very unique gifts there you can get, jams, jellies, sauces, stuff like that. Good idea. And it's very unique to give a gift like that as opposed to a big box store item. And then we finished the day up, up in Union Bridge. There we were on downtown Main Street and Union Bridge. There I was able to buy some arts and crafts, Christmas decorations, which I think are a wonderful gift. They're very unique. And like I said, make your gifts this year very unique and special. And the only place you'll find those type of gifts are on or downtown Main Streets. Not only the ones in my district, I'm, I have a preference of them, but all over the county. Yeah, we have Sykesville down in Commissioner Rothstein's district. We got Hampstead up in Commissioner Weaver's district. Go around and visit all these downtown areas and get some great, unique and special gifts because every local small businesses really need your help and support in the midst of all of this. Thank you very much.
I'd jump, I'd have to jump in on that, Eric. I have to say, my wife is taking this to heart because she is shopping often.
Yeah, you know, it's interesting. And then, then we're going to, we're going to make another U-turn and head back up to District One where if you, if you get a chance, ladies and gentlemen, drive by the Carroll County Office Building. Once again, the holiday decorations here are amazing and we have one of the best trees I think we've ever had. We want to thank again the Reasoner family from Keyesville, Kymar area. That tree actually came off of what used to be the Francis Scott Key Farm. So there's a lot of history there. So drive by and look at our, our decorations. It's, it's, they were great. And I want to thank again, all of our staff that made that happen. Tagging on to what Commissioner Boucher said, you know, it's interesting, as we continue to see shutdowns, and I'm not going to get into that debate right now, but we're, we're seeing a lot of money being transferred from Main Street to Wall Street because the big boxes are, are thriving. The Amazons are thriving. They're doing better than they've ever done. Our Main Streets continue to be challenged. So I will, I will tag along on what Commissioner Boucher said and all of us say, you have got to continue to support small business. Stop that Main Street to Wall Street funnel of money and give it to our, our, our small business community. And Eric, I just missed you in Union Bridge on Saturday. So we, we went, we, we crossed paths there on Main Street. A couple of things also.
Before me.
Yeah. A couple of things that are going on that I want to make folks aware of. You, you guys were talking about it's a season of giving. Once again, the Lineborough Manchester Lions Club has organized another home pickup food drive to support less fortunate families. And let's be clear, as we see this Main Street to Wall Street funnel of money, we've got a lot of folks that are really struggling and not sure where their next dollar is coming from, especially in our restaurant industry. As, as we continue to see restaurants being shut down, remember that it's not just the restaurants that's shutting down. It's, it's the waitstaff that rely on tips. They're not getting them. It's the cooks in the kitchen. They're not getting their money. It's the, the food distributors that are taking food to these places so the food can be made. They're not getting their money. There's a lot of people struggling here. So Lineborough Manchester's again, the Lions Club is doing their holiday home pickup. Chris Swam is going to put that on the website if he hasn't done so already. But you can donate any house, in any house with a 21102 zip code. And I encourage you, that's coming up, that's coming up on Saturday, December the 19th. So I encourage you to look at our website or give the folks over at Lineborough Manchester Lions Club a call and get in on that, on that food distribution, holiday home pickup. Very successful last year and they're hopeful that it's going to be, and I'm sure will be again this year. They do a great job over there. Carroll County Public Library is having their Letters to Santa campaign. Right now it's going on. You can stop by and take home, pick up a take home kit with all you need for letter writing. And then you can bring it to the library when you're finished and drop it in the special mailbox and get your letter to Santa out there. That, that's a great, a great venture as well. So contact the library or look at their website for that. I want to pause for a minute here in priority Carol and just pay tribute to a gentleman that, that passed away this, this week. Mr. Tom Timberman was one of the original 911 dispatchers here in Carroll County. I had the privilege of working with Tom at the 911 Center back in the day for about 12 years. And Tom was an amazing guy. You know, we, those of us that, that are in the public safety realm and knew what was, what was happening back in the day. Back, back in those days at the 911 Center, you knew exactly whose voices were, was on the air. And Tom had that distinct voice when he was, was dispatching. And again, he, he was one of the, the original dispatchers when they first started on the second floor over top of the old Westminster Firehouse on Main Street. And then Tom became a shift supervisor when they moved. But to the Timberman, to Tom's family, to his, his, his kids and his wife and grandchildren, all of us here in Carroll County say thank you for your service, Mr. Timberman. And rest in peace. And you also are another individual who made your mark here in Carroll County. Okay. With that, I have another priority Carol that will kind of tie in with where we're going on our agenda. Ed Singer is on this morning. So I will ask that Ed and those from the health department that are on, go ahead and light up here. And Ed is going to be paying tribute to one of his volunteers out there. And I've got a proclamation here, Ed, but I'll wait for you to do the, the presentation here and then we'll do the proclamation after that. So Ed, good morning.
Morning Commissioners and there we go. We got the Ag Center, the folks out at the Ag Center who are doing testing on with us. I, I, I have to say, you know, this has been obviously, as you guys know, a really difficult time for us at the health department from the very beginning of this pandemic. And wanted to recognize a couple of our volunteers today, but one of them wasn't available. So we only have one, one that's here today, Beth Harkins. And I don't see her, I see Richard Brace. But they're working on getting her. She's out there doing the testing today. She didn't want to, you know, she, she's been, she's been there almost every day, helping us with testing. But at the very beginning of this pandemic, when we were really struggling with, with our first outbreaks in nursing homes and, and the, and the outbreak everybody knows about that we had down at Pleasant View, she voluntarily went down there and helped them. And there weren't, there weren't people that we could find that were willing to go there and, and willing to help out in, in caring for these very sick, sick and dying patients. And it was, it was great that she was, that she was willing to step up and she's been willing to do whatever we've needed her to do as a volunteer. So all I'm seeing is the inside of the, the Ag Center right now. And I don't know if she even heard what I said about her, but anyway. Here she, here she is in her Santa hat and, and, and her PPE. So Beth, I, I just was telling the Commissioners, there's not enough good things. First of all, the health department couldn't be doing this without the help of a lot of volunteers that we're getting to help us get through this. And really appreciate what you did down at volunteering with, with helping with Pleasant View Nursing Home and, and everything that you're doing out at our testing site. And I can't just say enough good things about what, what you're doing for the health department and for the community. We, we'd be lost without volunteers like you. And, and you've been one of the, one of the folks that have really stepped up. And I just wanted to make sure we recognize what you were doing. So I don't know, Commissioners, is it appropriate for her to say a few words now? Or do you guys want to say something first?
Let me do the proclamation, Ed, and then we'll hear from Beth. And then we'll, I'll, I'll let my colleagues thank Beth personally. So Beth, I don't know if you can see this or not. First of all, I got to say it's amazing that we're getting a live stream from our testing facility. We might be the only county in the state of Maryland that has that capability. So kudos, kudos to you, Ed, and the staff out there for that. That's amazing in itself. But Beth, we're going to be giving a proclamation to you when we can see you safely. But the proclamation says that it's recognizing you for your volunteerism. Elizabeth Beth Haskins consistently donated her time totaling over 200 volunteer hours since the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic to the health department. During the onset of the pandemic, Beth volunteered to help staff Carroll County's first and largest nursing home outbreak. With almost all COVID-19 positive residents, Beth's response to the nursing home outbreak, when other clinical staff declined to respond for fear of contracting the disease, was seen as extremely brave. She has continued to support our community response by regularly suiting up in full personal protective equipment through the spring, summer and into the fall to collect specimens from Carroll County residents suspected of having this disease, as you are seeing live right now. And her volunteer efforts have supported the Carroll County Health Department testing site and been key to keeping Carroll County citizens safe and limiting the spread of this disease during the ongoing public health emergency. So we're, this is a proclamation that we'll be presenting to Beth on behalf of the County Board of Commissioners. We express our deep and abiding appreciation to Elizabeth Haskins, adopted this 10th day of December, 2020, and signed by the five county commissioners. And we will see that Beth does get this proclamation. So Beth, a few words from you and then I'll turn it over to my colleagues. If you can, I don't know if they have the ability to unmute out there, Ed, or not.
Beth, can, can we unmute the computer and are you able to talk? I would think so. We're seeing, we're seeing a good video stream.
There she is. Okay.
I don't know if you're going to be able to hear me, but this has been a really heartfelt opportunity for me to help with the community. So I thank you all for your support and the health department setting up this testing site. They take very good care of us here. So we're very appreciative of that also.
Thank you, Beth. Commissioner Rothstein.
Just a couple of simple words. One, thank you so much for all that you do. And it's a, it's a true testament to leaders who lead. You know, you'll, you'll say that's a team approach, but you need leaders for others to follow. And you know, you, you have shown that by not just words, but by example. So really appreciate all you're doing for our community. Thanks.
Thank you.
Dennis, Commissioner Frazier.
Beth, I want to thank you very much for all that you've done, especially in this troubling, troubling time. And the 200 hours that you've put in so far is, is tremendous. We couldn't do the testing and everything else that the health department's doing without the volunteers like you. And let's, you know, not deny the fact that you're putting yourself at risk by doing this, even though you have the PPE on and so forth, that mitigate the risks, you're still putting yourself at risk. So I really, really appreciate what you're doing for the county. Thank you.
Commissioner Weaver.
You're welcome.
Well, Beth, you know, during times of crisis, there are always certain people who rise to the top. No matter what, they are the ones who come through and shine. And you are one of those people. And I know a lot of people terrified of coronavirus and you are doing your, what most people are afraid to do. I, I give you a lot of credit for what you're doing. And you are one of those people that rise to the top throughout this whole process.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Boucher.
Ms. Haskins, I love the fact that you have the hat on and in spite of what we're going through, you're spreading holiday cheer. That's very admirable. Thank you very much. I'll keep it real simple. You represent the word hero in our community. The selfless giving of when you're, of yourself for the benefit of others and you personify that. So thank you very much. Blessing. So thank you very much. Blessings upon you and your family this holiday season.
Thank you.
And, and Beth, finally, on behalf of all of us here in Carroll County, you, you are what is making Carroll County great here as we continue to battle this. And you're, you're an amazing young lady and we want to thank you for everything that you are doing out there. Kudos, well done and keep up the great work. And I see that you've shifted, you've switched out of the turkey hat and put the Santa hat on. So that's, you're, you're, not only are you a special volunteer out there, but you're seasonal as well. Gotta love it.
Thank you.
A big round of applause for Beth Haskins, everybody. Thank you so very much. We appreciate your work. Stay safe out there, Beth. Stay safe out there and thank you for everything you've done and continue to do.
You're welcome. Blessings to you all.
Thank you. All right, how amazing is that that we get a live stream from our testing facility? You know, put chalk up another plus for Carroll County, man, I gotta tell you, so.
Great job, Chris, you and your group.
Yeah, two, two really quick things before we get into, yeah, two really quick things before we get into. Our, our first item, which is COVID. I forgot to mention that Carroll County, speaking of how good we are, we have the lowest unemployment rate in the state of Maryland right now. Five point one percent unemployment rate, the state is at seven point seven. And it just goes to show that we once again are doing wonderful things. We've got a packed day today. We've got a, a state health department call at one, we've also got a session at one we'll be going into just for our own work here. And then at three o'clock, the governor's going to speak again with updates. So we always keep our fingers crossed as to what he's going to say and we'll see what's happening there. So let's go into our COVID-19 discussion that we typically do. And it appears as if we have Maggie this morning to, to do these, to do our, our updates. And so with that, I will say good morning to Maggie. Good morning. And you're muted, Maggie. Check your.
Check your gear wheel.
Check your gear wheel.
It's gonna be a new phrase.
Yeah, check your gear wheel.
I'll make the shirts.
Tell her about that gear wheel.
We can't hear you. There's a gear wheel up on the upper right hand side. If you click on that, sometimes that refreshes your microphone.
And if we can't hear you, we're going to have to go back to Ed. We don't want to do that.
She can hear that.
Yeah, we don't.
Have you checked the gear wheel yet, Maggie? I'm watching your cursor float around here and I haven't seen you go up there yet. Right hand side, upper right.
Upper right.
Keep going.
Almost there.
Yeah.
She might not be, she might not be able to get up there with her cursor since she's in the share page. Chris, I don't know.
Yeah, I just, she heard me. Okay, now see if you can refresh that microphone there. Sometimes what happens is we get updates done while we're not at our computers and those little gremlins get in there and cause technological problems. Gremlins.
Gremlins was on the other night.
You getting any luck there?
Okay.
Can she call in as well?
Yep, use the phone number. We've got it here.
Yeah, let's get her to call in.
I'll send it to her.
Okay, Chris, Chris, Maggie, Chris is going to send you the call in and then we'll, we'll do that. In the interim, let's, let's. Let's try to keep moving here a little bit unless you're, how quickly are you going to do that, Chris?
I'm doing it right now, but I can't guarantee how quickly we'll be able to.
All right, let's, actually, we can't really, we can't really move forward here. We're kind of, we, we gotta kind of wait for, for Maggie and the statistics here, so let's.
Talk about the extension of state emergency.
Well, we could talk about that, but I think, yeah, I think that, hopefully that's going to be quick. Why don't we do that until Maggie gets on here? We also have, as part of our COVID discussion. We have to, to extend or discuss extending our state of emergency this morning for another 30 days. Is there any question in anyone's mind for debate on this? I will, I'm not going to stop the debate, but I think with the numbers that the way they are and, and what's going on here. I think this is probably a no brainer, but I'll open it up for my colleagues. I'm not going to, you, you, you all know how I feel about this one, so.
I'll make the motion to extend the state of emergency for 30 days.
I will second it.
Thank you, Commissioner Boucher.
Where was Weaver on that second?
Appreciate your second, Eric and.
I had to beat Weaver to start.
All right, any discussion on this, Commissioner Weaver or Ross Dean? Hearing none? All those in favor of extending the state of emergency for 30 days? That's unanimous. Okay, got that one out of the way. How we doing with Maggie here, Chris?
She's on the photo, it looks like right there. Let's see if she's in the, in the room yet.
I could read the rest of the Grinch's Little Christmas if you want me to fill the time in. Mask is in the other room, I could put that on too.
Okay, okay, that, while that's just a wonderful idea, Eric, let's, let's just say no to that one. Now she's gone. All right, I'll tell you what, Chris, will you work with her, please? Roberta, are you on? And Roberta's not on and Roberta's on.
Six minute ticket though.
Let's switch to the COVID relief fund. Oh, wait a minute.
I think I heard Maggie. Hey. I just, I, I got, I called in, I got put on hold and then I just tried to decide I would just go out and come in again. It's like unplugging things and plugging them back in. It always works.
Yeah, excellent.
No tech option. Now I just have to get my screen back up. Let's see. This one down, that one up, okay. Okay, let's see. Can, okay.
Yep, you're, you're, we're working on here.
There we go, almost there. All things working once. Okay, now can you see the graph and hear me?
Yep, we've got you, Maggie. You're on.
Okay, so sorry about that delay. Now if I can just get the slides to move. Okay, so good morning, sorry about that delay. I, as I said, Ed had to jump, jump off. He is over, he's working, he's got his major meeting this morning. So he wanted to be on to say thank you to Beth, but I had to jump off. So you're getting me again for the update. But I do have some interesting things to share today. So I, we updated the graphs a little bit with our epidemiologist, just to give you a little bit different, fresh review of some things. Although it all looks about the same, that the numbers are still continuing to climb. So here's our first graph, which combines the, so it's total cases now, which we have been looking at the community cases in the beginning. But I really feel with the facility cases going back up a little bit, that it's, it's better to look at the, the total cases. But this has the probable cases added in. I know we kind of wanted to just see what that looks like visually. The probable cases have also been increasing over the past several weeks. And so we wanted to be able to show you in the same graph, the two together. As you know, the probable cases don't count as confirmed cases, but we do treat them as positives. They are contact traced, they are, you know, asked to isolate and all. But this way it just kind of shows you what the, in addition to those true numbers, those total numbers that you see on the website are those probable cases. Next, I just wanted to isolate the probable cases and just remind everybody that they're, even though they're not counted, we are, you know, we are following up with them. And you know, these, these slides are posted every week on our website. And so I try to include a little more information on them so that folks who are just reading them can understand what the information means. Here's our rolling average, you know, you can see that we had that little dip last week when we had a little bit of a, a reduction in cases. But it's, you know, we're going back up now. The ICU beds in use, I haven't been super elevated, but I, as you had mentioned earlier today, the hospital, as Commissioner Frazier mentioned. The hospital is seeing a lot of COVID cases and, and really kind of the impact of COVID now, you know, locally. So we're going to be sharing some extra hospital data soon. But you know, this is just the one thing we've been sharing consistently, so I wanted to still include it. We also have some hospitalization data next. This data, we haven't been sharing recently because we, it was not being updated very consistently and we didn't feel like it was accurately reflecting what was happening. This is not what's happening at Carroll Hospital. So we all talked about that and, and, and there's a little more information about that. But this is what's happening to Carroll County residents in terms of the number of residents who are being hospitalized for COVID. There's a little bit of a data lag, so that's why I think it's a little bit lower this week, this past week. But you can see just by the wave that, you know, in the last several weeks, there have been more Carroll County residents hospitalized for COVID. This is only, it's only one hospitalization per person, so it's not counting people twice if they're hospitalized twice. It's just if anybody in Carroll County was ever hospitalized for COVID. So as I said, you can see it's not really a real time, but you can see then in the last several weeks, there have been more hospitalizations of people in Carroll County. So this is COVID deaths by week. I also, we also tweaked this graph a little bit to show you still the, the different, the facility deaths and the community deaths separately. But I wanted to stack them to really give a better, just a better visual for how many deaths we've really seen over the last few weeks in total. So you can see, obviously it's much, so much lower than that original spring, in the spring when we had so many facility deaths. But you can still see that facility and community deaths combined have given us a little spike in fatalities. We, our age, age range was getting so packed, we couldn't, couldn't really see the lines anymore. So we took out several weeks and just started in mid-August. And so you can see here a little bit more clearly the, the different, you know, sort of the variations in the age groups over time. And then here's the other age graph, which gives you a little bit, another sort of time, time view on a horizontal axis. But it's showing me those different groups. And just to note, these groups are not the same, not all the same size. There are different, you know, different numbers of people in these groups, so there's, and these are just sheer numbers, so it's not really a rate. I also wanted to mention the vaccination survey. I had said, I've been, you know, saying that I would, I would bring some results, so I have a few results from the vaccination survey. But anybody has any questions about the data, we can do that first and then I'll go into the survey.
Anything on the data? Pretty much speaks for itself.
It does.
The, the daily reports we're getting out of CHC are, are very troubling as well, so. Appreciate the, the sharing of that too, Maggie. I, I think Ed had spoken with Garrett out there that we're going to try to do that on a little bit more consistent basis, just to get the, the sense of where we are here, especially in the next month or two.
Yeah, yes. So, so we'll be sharing the, the total census, I believe, and then the number of, of COVID patients and the number of PUIs. And the number of COVID patients in this past week has been in the 30s, whereas before previous weeks, it's been in the maybe upper teens the last couple of weeks. So it's definitely higher this week, the number of COVID patients in Carroll Hospital. And so we're, we're watching that pretty closely and just, and hopefully, yeah, we'll be able to share that a little bit more clearly in the coming few days.
Maggie, are you familiar with, what is the ICU bed capacity at Carroll Hospital? Is it 14?
It may be 14 of it, the, the spreadsheet that I see every day, it's usually like 12, but I think it's around, I think it's around 14 total. But it's like 12 normally beds that they normally see. And as I said with our ICU graph, we were seeing some, some real upticks there, but I have it in the last few weeks, but it does seem like they have more COVID patients. So I'm, I think they're just not, all of them are in the ICU, a lot of them are in acute care beds.
Okay.
Well, I, I take away the positive from this amongst all the negative is thank goodness we're not seeing the spikes in fatalities. In relation to the spikes in infections like we had in the spring. So that's a positive we take away from this. And the fact that we're not seeing as many people in ICU, I'm really curious to find out, you know, medically, why we're able to bring that down. It's good, whatever we're doing, that's right. I wish we could expand and inform people because I'm very happy to see that the spike has not taken place in the fatalities. That was my biggest concern, that we'd see that fatality spike like we had in the spring. So whatever's going on, there are some positives out there and I'm very grateful to people and the medical staff that are making it happen.
That's a great point. Yeah, we, we have not seen quite the same spike as we did in the, in the spring. But of course, you know, a lot of those, those fatalities were in, you know, very vulnerable populations in facilities. And you know, we're, we're seeing that a little bit again. I mean, I'd say we have a spike, it's just a much smaller spike than we've had before. But we're thankful to, yeah, all the, the healthcare workers who are, are doing their best to care for people. And you know, the medical advances that people in labs and people who are studying these things have, have found. Trying lots of new treatments that certainly helped, I think, you know, keep the fatality rates down. But it's still, you know, it's still concerning. Obviously, the best way to prevent fatalities is to prevent infections in the first place. So that's our, our first, first line of defense is prevention, but we certainly are grateful for everybody who's worked hard to, to reduce the fatality rate over time. So any other questions about the data before I give you a little information about the vaccination survey?
No, I think we're good.
All right, so, so the, so the Maryland Department of Health did just release a frequently asked questions document. It's pretty long, pretty thorough. We'll be putting that up on our vaccination page today. So folks can look for that and that will be updated regularly. And now that we've gotten the results of this first survey, I will be working on making sure that we are able to answer a lot of the questions that the residents raised in this survey. Certainly had some great questions, a lot of people, you know, are interested but want to know more. And so we want to be able to give them that information as soon as it's available. So we'll be working a lot on getting out more information about vaccination, you know, over the next few weeks and as much as we can in the coming months as we all learn more. So as I said, I'll be posting the results on this website in a few minutes after this call. And folks who are, who did not get a chance to take the survey, we did close the large survey, but if anybody's interested in taking it still. I did open up a second, second wave of the survey because there are so many people who are still interested. So people can contact us, there's information on that page or they can give our hotline a call and get more information about how to take the survey. So these are just a few slides from the, from the results. A lot of the results are, you know, very interesting. One of the things I find most interesting about these surveys is just the comments people make because they really tell you what people want to know and what they, what their concerns are. So, so this first question we asked was if people would get a COVID vaccine as soon as it was available to them, you know, based on their priority group. And about half said that they were, were either definitely or probably planning to get the vaccine as soon as it was available to them. And about 35% they said that they would probably not or definitely not get it right away. So that helps us a little bit in planning, just to know, you know, who's going to wait and see, who's never going to, you know, who, who really doesn't want to get it and who definitely wants to get it as soon as possible. So if you're not sure, we ask people, why are you not sure? And this was pretty interesting, so a lot, you know, the, the biggest concern, people could answer multiple, you know, could choose multiple reasons. But the biggest concern was side effects. The second biggest concern was safety. The third, that the vaccine wasn't tested on people like that, people of the same race or the same age group or the same health conditions. The fourth was that the approval process was rushed. They were, so they're concerned about the approval process. And the fifth was effectiveness. And then we also asked what may, what would make people decide to get the vaccine at a later time? And this kind of echoes what was said in the, in the previous question, evidence of safety, evidence of effectiveness, evidence in people who like them. A lot of people said that if their doctor recommended it, they would, they would strongly consider it. And, and some people did say if it was a requirement, they would get it, but they might not get it otherwise. And the last question I want to share was, in what ways would you be comfortable receiving the vaccine when you choose to do so? This is a, you know, just helpful for us in planning how best to get the vaccine out to the community. And almost 80% said they'd be comfortable receiving it from their healthcare provider. For, over 40% said pharmacy, drive through clinic. A lot of folks comfortable getting it from their employer like they often do with a flu shot and then folks clinics with appointments. So that will help us as we move forward and learn what, you know, what vaccines we're getting when and what we, and how we can, we can get it out to the public. That'll help us to know a little more about what they, what they, what folks would like to see. So any questions about the vaccination survey?
Interesting. Very, very interesting results, Maggie. That's all, that's all I can say about it. It's, and again, you're a little over 10,000 folks that took it, so.
Yes.
And the survey's still open? Is that what you said?
So the survey, the first survey isn't open since I had to present the results, but I had enough people who were interested that I've made a second survey. So folks can contact me and find a way to take that. I'm happy to, to talk with somebody over the phone or send it in the mail if they really want to take it, but aren't able to take it online. So, so people can still take it if they want to. We're, obviously this is a long, long haul, we're going to be planning and distributing this vaccine for quite a long time. And so we're happy to get any feedback we can from the community.
Okay.
And as I said, those results will be available on our website and they're including some of the interesting comments that I think will really help us plan and communicate about the vaccine as we move forward. So that's all I have. Just reminding people again to, you know, help move Carol forward by, by taking all these steps that we all know by heart by now. We will have a video coming out hopefully later today, that's a really positive, just kind of a thank you video to, to thank everybody for, for all the work they've done. I think Carroll County is still really, you know, doing, doing well considering, you know, the rest of the, the state and the rest of the country. And we need to just continue to do that and continue to watch out for each other and protect each other by taking all these steps.
Okay. Maggie, I know today, we, we all have heard that the, the there could be a decision by the experts on whether or not the vaccine, I think Dennis, you mentioned that.
Yep.
As we get ever so closer there, I know that there are, are procedures and a process in place that you all at the Health Department have, have put together working collaboratively with all of the partners around the county. So there is, there, there is a process in place for that. And is that something, will that process be shared? Or how, how do we anticipate advising our citizens on that particular adventure that we're going to be entering into?
That's a great, great question, the, the big vaccination adventure. Yes, we, we will be sharing more information about that. It's a little tricky because, you know, as, as we've said before, it's so many things, there are so many moving parts and so many things are changing that our plans have to be very flexible. So it isn't like we can say, we're going to be doing this, this week, and this next week, and this next month. We're really trying to be flexible and really waiting for guidance from the state and from federal government, just, you know, in terms of how many doses we have, which vaccine we're getting, how it needs to be stored and things like that. So a lot of variables still, but we, we do need, we do want to share more about the process. And I think now that we, once we have a little bit more information about which vaccine we're getting, we'll be, we'll be sharing more information. Right now, as, as I think everybody probably knows, that first wave will be going to long-term care facilities and some of those first responders, healthcare workers. And so that, that, that plan is in, you know, is in place with our community partners and, you know, there's a lot of flexibility built in there, but we're already starting to work on those parts and getting those groups figuring out who needs to be vaccinated, how many people, and how best to do that. So that's, that's in the works. But in terms of when we, when we open to larger groups and we have more vaccine, and we're starting with those sort of second level priority groups, we'll be sharing those plans in advance, so people can really prepare and know what steps they need to take to get, to get on the list and to when to show up and, and things like that. So that will be, will be shared as soon as we have more information.
Okay, excellent. And just a reminder of the testing capabilities that you all have at the Shipley Arena again, and the number to call.
So our number, four one oh, eight seven six, four eight, four eight. You can also go to our website and sign up. It's great if you're working with your provider, but you don't have to, to have a provider's order to, to get the test. We test on Sundays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays from nine to twelve. We've opened extra spaces, so hopefully most folks can get in. There's still a lot of demand, but we, we certainly ask, ask that people plan in advance if they can. Not everybody can, but if you can, and to let us know if you can't make it, because those, those open spots will, will hopefully be used by somebody else.
Okay, anything else for Maggie? Okay, thank you, Maggie.
All right, thank you. Thanks for your patience with my technical difficulties. Have a great day.
It worries you too. Thanks. All right, with that, we will move into our discussion on our Corona Relief Fund Plan. And I'll turn this discussion over to our county administrator, Roberto Windham. Good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen. So we've been talking about this each week since May or June for a long time. We're nearing the end. As I said, the last couple of weeks, we were doing some final telling with all of the agencies, both internal and external that have, that have received some grant funding. And I sent you the latest spreadsheet yesterday evening. Interestingly, and not, but not surprisingly, the plan really has not changed from where we started. Very few differences at that time, from, from that time to this. The two projects of note that have changed. One, we added an eviction prevention program. And the second really didn't change as much as it did increase over time. We started off with one anticipated amount for business relief. And as numbers became more and more refined, as we worked the plan and, and started changing things from estimates to actual costs, we're able to, to dedicate more and more money to business relief. And I use business in a very, very broad sense. And in fact, if you look at the top of your chart, I think it's very telling that we've used about seven and a half million dollars of the fourteen point six million dollars that the county received for relief out to the constituencies in, in Carroll County. So, you know, you've always known from the beginning that there were two halves to this money. Half went to the Health Department and half came to the county. The Health Department money has been used mostly for their purposes and, and then medically related expenses throughout the county for businesses and, and other other entities. And in fact, the Health Department has, from their money, also granted about three and a half million dollars in various business kinds of relief. To nonprofits, businesses, and other things, other such entities. And then the other half, of course, of the money came to the county and, and was used for all the different projects that you see listed on the, on the spreadsheet. The final thing, and why we've been able to say all along that we were going to be able to spend the money is because the Treasury guidance on this allows jurisdictions to offset costs for certain staff deemed substantially dedicated. So this gives recipients like Carol flexibility to spend the entire grant. So, and then to that end, you'll, you'll see that the Health Department has chosen to provide to the county any unexpendable funds that they have to us for our substantially dedicated costs. And if, if, if in calendar year twenty-one, there isn't additional relief money or or there are additional costs that especially the Health Department has, we can discuss at that time, using some of that, offsetting some of that, those COVID costs in calendar year nineteen with some of the savings that we would incur as a result of this substantially dedicated. We would be able to pay for things such as vaccine delivery, contact tracing, and testing into calendar year twenty-one, if you so decided. But we'll take that up next year, calendar year. So that's sort of the update on that. Are there any questions? We're just getting near the end. I wanted to, if there are any questions about the, the plan, I wanted to turn it over to Jeff Castenbry, I'm just looking for him on here. Jeff Castenbry and his team to update you on some of the bigger building construction projects that we've undertaken. Before I do that, any questions for me? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Castenbry, if you'll update the commissioners on some of the big building projects, I'd appreciate it.
Will do. And Commissioner Fraser, do you have a question? Okay. Okay, great. So thank you so much. Thank you, commissioners, for your time. I'm here today with Eric Rodyne, Deputy Director, Public Works. Also, he'll be providing an update on the larger capital projects that you are seeing touching and feeling here at the building, along with the, at the landfill. Summary of what we have going on with our facilities-based projects is, we have a lot of projects that are underway that will, we are going to have here complete, that we've completed to date. A few of the, summary of those is our sneeze guards. Well, we still have a couple of things kind of trickle in here and there for our workstations to remain separated. Those are complete. Our sanitation stuff has been replaced, door plates, faucets, soap and towel dispensers to keep those touchless. We have a zoning project, we had to, did the work over zoning, so that was a great project to allow that office staff to be separated out. Court wall project for them to continue on with their court operations. Same thing with permits, Commissioner Haring Room, those are complete. North Carroll Senior Center Storage Facility has been completed and fully utilized by, between us and the Health Department to keep all of our supplies in our PPE stock that we've been mandated to have on hand, so we can keep everybody protected. New drop-off area, obviously, for the plans and specifications to keep handle the customer service with our citizens. Few things that we have coming up in the very, in the near future now is the Kessler, Kessler Building, adding a door over at that building will be completed next week. Will allow us the additional warehouse space that we need for, for items and materials that we have to store while we go through these processes of additional health and safety. The auto door openers for double oh three and the commissioners' meeting rooms, so this way you keep that touchless. But also gives us the ability to add some additional access for any of our citizens that come to visit us when we're back to open session that may have some mobility needs or restrictions or issues. We can, we'll have the automatic doors to allow them to get in and out without having to try to hold the doors open. And auto dispensers for citizen services and multiple other groups will be completed in next week. You might have seen, for those who've been in building, our addition of additional cubicles, divisions for our administrative staff or those that are right on the front lines as we go back to reopen. Gives them that separation where they may not have had their own office space or cubicle before. We've been able to take down the quick plexiglass and put up a, a permanent structure that gives them a little more privacy, but also protection now and moving forward. And the last one is the UV systems for HVAC systems. Like we mentioned many, many times before, we are just like everybody else in the world right now, trying to get our hands on these units. A lot of the smaller units have been completed. We're about sixty to seventy-five percent complete right now, depends on how we're looking at that, because a lot of the smaller units have come in, so our senior centers or some of our small, or Robert Milton Center that has smaller HVAC units in section units or areas, we've been able to replace or get those installed and get that equipment in quicker from the suppliers. It's the larger units like we might have here at the top of our COB, when you have these larger roof units, those are the ones that are having a little behind coming in. But facilities is working diligently, we're playing on another subcontractor now to help with cleaning and processing and getting electrical work. So all we have to do is soon as these arrive, we can just plug and play and still work on that deadline of the thirtieth to get all those installed as they arrive. Any questions on those projects before I pass this along to Eric? All right, hearing none at this point. Eric, please take it away.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Good morning, commissioners, and thank you for your time this morning and the opportunity to update you on the CARES Act products. First, I'd like to take a moment and thank the staff of Building Construction, Solid Waste, and our admin staff for all their hard work to move these projects forward on such a short timeline. Everyone has put forth an extra, extra time on these projects, and I sincerely appreciate their efforts. These projects have certainly come with some unique challenges from availability of materials, your timely deliveries, as well as the expedited timeline for the project completion. I'll be updating you on four projects funded by the CARES Act this morning. First project is the New Windsor Emergency Management renovation. This project is an eight hundred twenty-five square foot renovation at the library headquarters in New Windsor for use as offices by emergency management. This renovation consists of subdividing an existing open, open office space into four offices, a conference room, and storage. The demolition and electrical HVAC and plumbing roughens are complete and inspected. Drywall finishing and paint are expected to complete by the end of this week. And next week, then we'll begin completing the finishes in the space, and the project will complete the furniture delivery scheduled around December twenty-third. Second project is the Secondary Emergency Communications Center renovation. This project is a one thousand seven hundred and seventy-five square foot renovation on the basement level of the county office building. This renovation includes expanding the existing secondary call center, expansion of the current kitchen, and conversion of one of the two bathrooms into a shower room. Currently, demolition and plumbing, electrical HVAC, roughens, and closing inspections are complete for the emergency call center space, the kitchen, the bathroom, and the shower room. Installation of data cabling and electrical wiring for the six new consoles is underway. Drywall has been hung and is in the process of being finished. The space will be painted and flooring will be complete next week, followed by the finishes in the kitchen. The third project is the County Office Building Lobby renovation. This project is a one thousand square foot renovation to the main entrance of the lobby of the county office building. The renovation includes replacement of the front entry doors with touchless sliding glass doors, a new reception desk, a new security station, and general renovations to the lobby. Minor changes to human resources and economic development were required to accommodate the new layout. The new front lobby will be equipped with touchless temperature scanners and a self-check-in kiosk. The existing floor and ceiling have been reworked to be integrated as required to conform to the new layout. Demolition and plumbing, electrical HVAC, roughens, and closing inspections are complete. Drywall hanging and finishing is underway, and finishes to the lobby are expected to begin next week, and the target completion date of the lobby is December twenty-third. And the fourth and final project that I'll be updating on this morning is the addition of the unattended customer payment centers at the Northern landfill. This project provides for the placement of unattended customer payment centers at the inbound and outbound scales at Northern landfill. The new payment centers will permit touchless driver's license scanning, credit card processing, and print out a receipt of the transaction. Each center is equipped with an intercom for communication between the customer and the Waymaster. IT cabling and switch upgrade will be completed today. The payment centers are currently being assembled by the vendor and are scheduled to be installed over the next two weeks. Any questions on those projects?
So a lot of work has been done, a little bit left to do, that we believe that we will come right, have everything complete and the money spent by December thirtieth, as required by the federal government. So if there are any questions, I'll take them. Otherwise, I did not call on Jack, you noticed, yet, because the only economic relief left was the state-related money, so it's not related to the CARES plan, and I didn't want to get people confused, so.
I don't, just a quick comment, I don't know that this county has ever taken on this number of projects at the same time. And I know that it's been driven by the COVID relief funding and what have you, but it's remarkable that our staff has been able to, to change gears and take on this amount of projects to make all of us safer. And I, I can't, I can't even, I can't even imagine the, the, the amount of hours that have been spent attempting to get this done. So to all of you that are doing this, Jeff, Eric, everybody that's involved, you guys have done, you've stepped up and done an amazing job. You know, I, I bark about things every now and then. Jeff, you know that I bark about the fountain a lot, and, but that's just a blip on the radar. You know, the projects that you have undertaken here is just remarkable. So to all of you, we truly do appreciate it. It's, it's an incredible, incredible amount of work that you all have undertaken, and you're doing a tremendous job.
Thank you very much. And, and, yeah, you hit the nail on the head, and we do have in many, in time and time again, and I thank all the commissioners for your support and assistance, Roberto for your, you know, when we have, you know, Deb and Heidi and Stacy all stepped up to help kind of manage the, manage how we handle this money and, and I'm, you know, surprised they haven't pulled all their hair out yet. But just as a testament to, you know, our facility staff and everybody too, that everybody has stepped up on this, is none of our regular projects have been put on hold. None of our other regular projects have been stopped. They continue on while they're doing all of this additional work that was added to their plate that wasn't on their radar earlier this year. And I, it is a tremendous team.
So I think Commissioner Wans did pull out all his hair, but that's a different story for a different time. Hey, it, it's there. Hey, it's, it's there, I, I had to, you know, but.
Hair loss, I think that's a side effect they haven't talked about yet.
Yeah. Yeah, Commissioner Wans, since you did open it up, the comment, I also absolutely agree. We did it right and we, we packaged it right with the care package receipt. You know, providing the appropriate guidelines and guidance and. Yeah, now that we're towards the twilight time of spending these CARES Act. And it's going to be spent on all the right projects, definitely, I, I agree. We, we prioritize the effort, you know, Roberta, you did a great job in, in the leadership and the team just. Putting it all together, so, yeah, that, that's what I was thinking the same as you there, Commissioner Wans. Where, you know, it's. Except for the hair, yeah, we'll, we'll leave the hair alone, I, I got a little, so, okay.
I'd like to add that this was accomplished while several of our staff members and our families had suffered through this infection. I appreciate what you guys pulled off because you did this while your families were suffering as well and that. A lot of people don't realize that, that this has hit our families and our staff as well. And they're so dedicated that they continue to push on, so Mr. Katz, I want to thank you and your staff for being able to pull this off, thank you very much.
Thank you, but it, it is our staff and it takes a great team and I, I can, I am thankful. Every day for everybody of Public Works and everybody of this county. It's, when, when the time, when it, everybody needs to pull together, everybody here pulls together and. Get, brings things to the finish line and elevates the bar for the rest of the state. And I cannot be more proud of the team that we have, thank you.
I think it's particularly telling that, as I said at the beginning, we started. You know, we, we heard about this money and, and within, I think, ten days, we were supposed to create a plan. And submit it to the state and with the entire staff, all six hundred and fifty. That are related to you guys, plus all of our municipalities, our. Governmental partners, et cetera, all chipped in, sent out a call. Need to know what you're going to need for the next six months for COVID related projects. We received all their ideas, we threw them into a well thought out with the limited time we had planned. And have been implementing that plan ever since with virtually no change, so people. Really, really, all across the county stepped up and have done an absolutely wonderful job for the citizens of Carolina. So with that, I think we can turn it over to Jack, unless there's some, anything else about the CRF plan. I'll turn it over to Jack for information on where we stand on the state money. That was given to the county, the one point, approximately one point two million dollars for direct restaurant.
Thank you Commissioners, have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks Jeff. Jack?
Commissioners, good morning. We received a grant from the state for restaurants of one million, two oh one, five oh one. We received a hundred and forty-five. Restaurants, send in their applications. We, that gives us. Reminder with, we have a remainder of about two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. So you voted last week to split it evenly among the one forty-five. We still have one straggle out there, we're trying to, we're trying to get all the information. But it looks like the hundred and forty-five are going to get additional, a little over fifteen hundred dollars. A, a grant, the, this is another grant, we're gonna, we're waiting for the one to see if it comes in today. By five o'clock, we told them, once we find out if it's going to come in or not coming in. We're going to go ahead and start tonight. Sending the agreements out, we'll, we'll send them out all night and tomorrow. Well, we ask for them to come back by next Tuesday. So we give time, you know, to the County Department to get the checks out. But it's going to be roughly about fifteen hundred dollars, we'll have the final total. You know, tonight, like I say, at five o'clock, we're waiting for one other, one other company we're, we're trying to work with. The service organizations, there was thirteen of them, we did get nine of them, they came back, we worked with them all. So we feel good about that, but overall, it's been a real success. You know, we'll get them in, we'll, we told them, you know, let's say by next Tuesday, so we should be done with our paperwork, hopefully. You know, somewhere, you know, another week it takes, you know, for the paperwork to get upstairs, so checks will be going out be way before Christmas. And we kind of got our breather for a couple of weeks and we're kind of waiting for the next round. We're hopeful, we're going to get another round in January to help the, you know, all the business, the restaurants and the business, so. You know, we were excited about all the programs, so like Roberta said, about seventy-five million dollars went out to businesses, but especially to restaurants.
Jack, I really appreciate the adjustments that you were able to make. You know, we threw the, a bit of a curve ball with the service organizations as we recognize them, coming from the veterans community. And you were able to reach out to them, so nine out thirteen is fantastic. Question, and I don't, I'm not asking for the specifics, but doing a bit of, I guess, the monkey math. A hundred and forty-five restaurants out of how many? And how many have been, you reached out to that said, no, we do not want this grant? Was that a significant amount as well?
No. We had a handful of restaurants saying, we, we, we are, we're doing okay, we don't need the grant. And I don't have the total of the restaurants because you got a, you, you have a lot of. It's over, it's over two hundred, I do know that.
Yeah.
But we're, we're probably a good seventy, seventy-five percent of all the restaurants that came in.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's, yeah, go ahead.
It's only a handful that said, we, we're doing okay. But, you know, we, we don't need the money, we had about a handful, but not a lot, I can tell you, not a lot.
That, that's great, so, so, yeah, if we look at that seventy, seventy-five percent, you know, receiving. These grant money, nine of thirteen service organizations, and we're talking about the veteran service organizations receiving these grants, that's phenomenal. And, you know, again, a testament to you and the team reaching out to them and just continuing to, to push it, so. And, and, you know, getting the money out before Christmas is just a cherry on the top, you know, for a lot, a lot of these folks. So that's awesome, so congratulations and thank you for all you're doing.
Well, thank you, the, the team will take a couple of week break and hopefully we'll get another stimulus in January for businesses. You know, so we can, we can keep helping the businesses, especially the restaurants also. But we'll start, like I said, we'll start tonight sending out the, the agreements.
Dan, anything else for Jack? Okay, I think we're good, Roberta?
That's all, so we'll be back next week for one final wrap-up for the year and. And then, and we'll put this, this project to bed hopefully, thank you.
Okay, thanks, just a couple, couple of quick comments, I was on a conference call with Mako earlier this week. And it had to do with relief funding. I just want to remind folks that we continue, we need to continue to support our restaurant industry. I don't know what's going to happen this afternoon at three o'clock. Some of the bigger counties are taking it upon themselves to, to shut down that industry. And listen, I get it. I, I get the, the sense that that, that needs to occur. But I also am struggling with the fact that this is one industry that went above and beyond and conformed to the nth degree. And now they're, they're, they're getting shut down in some of these jurisdictions, so. My point here is this, don't stop supporting these restaurants, you have got to continue to do that. Regardless of what happens this afternoon, if indeed anything does. All of us know that we have been following the Governor's teams' guidelines and, and, and requests to a T and. I would suspect that we will do that again. But if indeed something occurs there, continue to support these restaurants. I don't want to get into a point of, of making sure that we, as a county government. Are relying on the feds to give us more money so that our restaurants can stay open, because there's no guarantee there at all. And that was the message that was sent to us in the Mako Conference Call, if there is another round of funding. This, it's, it's predicted that we'll have a lot more time to be able to utilize it and, and spend it. They're even talking about maybe the full year of twenty twenty-one calendar year, which would be good. But again, all of this is, is, is predicted and nothing is set in stone. So we have got to continue to support the restaurant industry. And remember that there are a lot of people that are hurting as a result of these restaurants. Being, being challenged with this pandemic, so. That's my ten cent sermon for the day on the restaurant industry, so we'll see what, where the funding. What happens with the funding and if indeed we do get another round, so. But appreciate all the work that's been done, honestly. All of us see it, the five of us talk amongst ourselves a lot and it's just amazing the amount of work that, that's being done here. With a small staff, I, I, I will, I will mention that too. I always like when I go to these state meetings where a county executive walks in with ten people behind him. And I typically walk in with one and we do more than they do. Interesting set of, of circumstances there and I'll leave it at that, anything else? Okay, thank you, Roberta, and yes, it's typically you, I know you saw, I saw your hand, it's typically Roberta, so, okay.
I take up for ten.
All right, anything, anything else for, for the COVID discussion this morning? All right, a reminder again, the Governor will be on at three PM and we'll see what the next set of parameters are. That may come our way and a big thank you to everyone, all right, we're going to move on. Through our agenda here and first out of the gate is request approval to ten-year extension. Renewal of the pilot program for the Westminster Bond Senior Apartments, that's the payment in lieu of taxes. And I will turn this discussion over to our Director of Citizen Services, Celine Steckel, Celine, good morning.
Good morning Commissioner. And thank you for having us, I just want to preface this by saying there is construction going on outside my window today, so if you hear any. Dump truck horns, please excuse that and hopefully the train doesn't go through this morning, so. I'm returning to you before you today and Patricia Denny, if you want to turn your camera on, if you're able to, I see Betty that you have. I'm returning before you today with representatives from the Westminster Bond Senior Associates LLC. Owned by Conifer Realty, who wish to request approval for a fifteen-year extension and/or renewal. Of the payment in lieu of taxes agreement for Westminster Bond Senior Apartments, better known to us as Sunnybrook Senior Apartments. I'm joined today by Patty, Patricia Denny, good morning Patricia, and by Betty Perry, both of Conifer Realty. As well as my county colleagues, Rob Burke, our comptroller, and Danielle Yates, our Bureau Chief of Housing and Community Connections. As you may recall, Conifer Representatives joined us on June twenty-fifth. With their initial request to renew their fifteen-year pilot agreement, which was expiring on June thirtieth. A one-year extension was granted by you, the board. With the request that Conifer returned to provide additional information. Regarding their Sunnybrook Senior Apartment rental structure and the positive impact the pilot has on that for our citizens of Carroll County. As part of the pilot, Westminster Bond Senior Apartment. Apartments is obligated to provide income restricted rental options for older adults. A fifteen-year renewal of the pilot agreement is being requested. In fiscal year twenty-one, the pilot was able to provide a cost savings to Westminster Bond Senior Apartments of twelve thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Patricia Denny to share some additional information regarding the apartments, who they serve and how that. How this, and I'm sorry, I see Ted Best, you are here also, I'm assuming with Conifer, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, and so I'm going to turn this over to Patricia to give us that additional detail.
Good morning gentlemen, thank you for having us. I'm actually going to turn it over to Betty Perry, who is the Regional Vice President for Conifer that oversees Westminster Bond's apartment complex. So I think she's going to start giving you a little bit of background, just about Conifer and specifics about the property, so. Betty, I'll hand it over to you, thank you.
Thank you Patty, so my name is Betty Perry, as Celine and Patty has described. And I'm the Regional Manager, our Regional Vice President for Conifer Realty. I thank you for allowing us to make this presentation and kind of outline some of the benefits of partnering. With private landlords and maintaining affordable housing within your community. And to appeal to extend the pilot agreement. Conifer Realty has been developing, constructing and managing high-quality affordable housing for both seniors and working families for forty years. We understood forty years ago the importance of the ever-growing need for affordable housing in communities. And we had dedicated our entire business model to the affordable housing, utilizing the federal. Low-income housing tax credit program and then partnering that with state and local programs as well. The pilot agreements is part of that local programming that sometimes is very essential to the financing of a property. The program requires that residents have incomes less than thirty to sixty percent of the area median income. Those rents are maintained and to a corresponding percentage. And in most cases, our rents have been below the market rents. And even in, in this case, we are about nine point three percent lower than even the maximum tax credit level allowable rent at Sunnybrook. An important component of the financing and the successful maintaining of the property is the pilot agreement. It allows us to really control our expenses and to forecast our expenses going forward. Because we, we know exactly what our expenses are, or at least on that part of it. Sunnybrook consists of a hundred and fifty apartment homes. And the unit mix is fourteen units each at the thirty percent and the forty percent AMI. We also have twenty-eight units at the sixty percent AMI, but the most of, the majority of our units, ninety-four, ninety-four units. Is at the fifty percent AMI. That really keeps our rents at four hundred and forty-six dollars to the maximum of one thousand fifteen for our residents. Sunnybrook rarely sees vacancies, we never have anybody move away from the property for any other reason other than they can no longer live independently. Or sadly, they have ended, you know, they've reached the end of their life and, and they pass away and the unit becomes vacant. So we, and the waitlist is extensive, so we never have a problem filling the units. And in fact, we have more people apply on a monthly basis than we're able to house. Sunnybrook is an older community and it is now starting to see or experience capital needs improvements. So we are looking at substantial financial needs for the property in terms of a new roof. In terms of upgrading HVAC systems and water heaters and those come at a cost. And we're, we're again trying to maintain the affordability of the rents. Additionally, I'm sure you experience it as well with, as all businesses and employers. We have employee costs that are escalating, we have insurance costs that are escalating. And then we have just general operating expenses that are also escalating. So the pilot agreement is again essential for us to be able to really plan out our expenses. Make further investment in this property and maintain it within the community. As I said earlier, our rents currently are about nine point three percent below even what we are permitted to charge under the low-income housing tax credit program. We make every effort to keep our rents as low as possible for our residents because we understand that they are on fixed incomes. And that their, their increases do not meet the expense increases. Because we are committed to maintaining Sunnybrook Apartments affordable, we are respectfully requesting the extension of the pilot agreement. We're actually requesting it to be for a fifteen-year extension. This is just crucial in our ability to be able to maintain this property and the quality of living. Patricia, Patty Denny is what we call her, has some more, maybe some financial questions or answers for you. But we really just appeal to extending the pilot agreement so that we can make some investment in this property and really keep it affordable for the seniors of Carroll County.
So one thing, thank you, Betty. One thing I would like to note is the structure of the pilot is current, the way the current structure is, is that there is a annual floor of $62,000. I think it's important to note that prior to 2017, the assessment has continually increased year over year. And in the, prior to 2017, the tax liability annually, if there wasn't a pilot, would have been less than what we were paying under the pilot. In, based on some information I have back to 2012, it was roughly $26,000 per year of additional tax payments. We are paying just due to that $62,000 floor based on, compared to what the assessment was. It, it flipped in 2017 because the assessment has continually increased the last three years. On average, it's been a roughly 6 to 7% increase in the assessed value.
Okay. Anything else from the Conifer folks before we get into this discussion?
I don't have anything to add unless there's specific questions, you know, on the financials for the property or the capital. I think Betty can speak in more detail on capital improvements on an aging asset.
Okay. The first question that sticks out to me, Patricia, is why 15 years? Why, why that length of time? What, what's, what's the, you know, what, what creates that time period there and the parameters associated with 15 years?
To, part of the regulatory agreement requires that we have what we call an extended use period. So the tax credit program is usually for a 15-year initial period. The extended use period actually extends, extends those rents for an additional 15-year period.
Is there, is there ever a chance for readjusting that in that 15-year period or is that locked in then?
That's based on a regulatory agreement. So it's, we are required to keep the rents restricted for the additional extended use period. There's a regular, state regulatory agreement.
Yeah. Is that what we did the last time?
I'm not sure what you mean by the last time.
Well, we did have a, we were in a pilot program now. Was that also 15 years or that, that hasn't been that long, right? We're in a, we're in a different time period now, I believe, because I.
Extended use period, I believe.
Yes, right. Okay. Okay.
Well, the extended use period was for one additional year. What was the period before that?
Yeah, that's where, that's the better question.
Just trying to help you out.
Thank you.
So the initial pilot was for 15 years, which was based on the initial restricted rent period. The extended use period is part of the regulatory agreement on the property. Which is why we're requesting an additional 15-year period on the pilot. So the period of time, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Are you receiving some type of tax break from any other government agencies? Like state?
No, there is no state benefit abatement in the state of Maryland on this property. No.
So the only one you're getting from this property is from the county then, correct?
Correct.
What motivated the original agreement? Was this going construction? What was the impetus behind this original?
I believe it's, you know, I obviously wasn't around when the initial negotiations, but when this property was constructed, it's, it's very common practice for Conifer when we're developing deals to make these, these, as Betty I think mentioned, these projects viable is to approach the county, appropriate county with, you know, potentially a tax abatement.
And as the, as the original contract reads, the original agreement, it does look like it was initiated as they acquired the parcel of land.
So basically it accomplished its original goal. I'm apprehensive about extending something for a reason that doesn't match up the original reason we did it.
Well, if I may, if I may add, the original reason was to keep the property affordable. Part of the finance packaging when we're developing properties is using not only the tax credit program on a federal level, but looking at local financing, state financing. And typically the local financing is the pilot agreement. And then the state financing might be through additional funding through state agencies that lead to the regulatory agreement. The first 15 years is for the first 15-year compliance period. The extended use period is for the second 15 years. And it becomes even more crucial to have the pilot agreement extended for the second period because now the property is aging and we have more capital improvements that we need to do. And it becomes really crucial to be able to balance our expenses and make that investment back into the property to keep it viable. You know, the 15th, the second extended use period is really important for us to have stable financing and really look to partner with our local communities so that we can make that substantial investment. Because now the second 15 years is going to be much more substantial in investment in the property. You're talking roofs, you're talking concrete and parking lot replacements, you're talking HVAC systems. These are all really substantially costly investments in the property that we really have to be able to, to do to keep the property at a high-quality affordable housing for the seniors of Carroll County.
Thank you.
Are all 150 units restricted rent?
I'm sorry?
Are all of the 150 units restricted rent?
Yes. And, and like I said earlier, 94 of those units, which is the majority of the units, are at a 50% AMI. So it really is those seniors in Carroll County that fall below the 50% AMI. You know, or the area median income and their incomes are fixed at this point now.
Ms. Steckel, are these citizens having a substantial impact upon citizen services?
So we are, we work very closely with many of the residents of Sunnybrook. We, we have them engaged in our housing program as well as many of our programs through the Bureau of Aging and Disabilities. We, we've gone out to Sunnybrook and done presentations there on Medicare and other pieces of, of aging programs. So we, we do, we do and are familiar with very, very many of the folks that reside at Sunnybrook. And I do believe it still remains as a stop on our CTS bus route. On, on the regular Trailblazer routes. So this is a thriving community for some of our lower income, older adults in the county. And it does provide quite a benefit to, to our seniors.
So revenue we receive from them is in return basically in citizen services.
I don't know that we're receiving revenue back into citizen services because the, the services that we're providing to these individuals are not paid services. But we are receiving funding through Title III dollars from the Older Americans Act and other funding to support the services we are providing to these citizens.
Are there any other restricted income apartments in Carroll County?
We currently purchased a low-income property in.
I don't need just in your group. I'm sorry. Is any at all, Celine, are there any other restricted income apartments in Carroll County?
Yeah, if you want to.
Say it again.
There are other apartment complexes that actually utilize USDA funding to provide assistance, but they're not actually restricted.
So this is, so this is the only one in Carroll County? Because what I was trying to get, are there others and are they, are we treating them exactly the same way? But they are, if there are no others, then this is unique property and this is unique to them. Am I right?
Correct.
Yeah, I think there are others that are subsidized but not restricted. But a few thoughts, going with where Commissioner Boucher was going. The initial pilot 15 years ago and now asking for another 15 years. I feel like we're going into, what we say in the military, mission creep. Like we're finding reasons for an additional funding, for additional reasons for, for this type of funding. As opposed to, here's the problem, what is the cost of the problem? And whether this program will be the right solution for that or not. And that, so I'm a little taken back on that. The, if, if I can get a definition of what older adults mean, is that 62, 65? And then also, what happens if you don't get this program put in place? If we come out and say, no, this is not the right time for us to approve the pilot. What, what happens to the apartment complex and those living there? Because I know you may not get subsidized or the, the complex may not get any subsidies except for this. But the individuals are getting subsidies, aren't they, from federal and state opportunities? You know, because I know that question was asked as well. So I know I threw a lot at you, but that, those are the, the thoughts that I'm kind of working myself through. As, as, as we're getting into this, but the, the key one I think is what happens if you don't get this?
So if the pilot agreement is not extended, then that means we have to look at our fiscal budgeting and see what we, how we're going to pay for these capital improvements. And most likely it will result in substantial rent increases for the seniors. Like I said, we're 9.3% below the maximum tax credit rents now. So we would have to, you know, substantially get up to at least the maximum tax credit to increase the revenue stream so that we can pay for these capital improvements. I mean, that's just, you know, that is just what's going to have to happen for us to be able to keep this property maintained is the dollars have to come from somewhere. You know, and with all the other expenses increasing, we've been really diligent on making sure that our rent increases on an annual basis are far below what our expense increases are. So that is ultimately what would have to happen is we would have to look at then increasing the rents much more substantially than we have over the past few years for the seniors. It's, it's just, it is what it is kind of thing. In terms of, I, I kind of forget some of your other questions that were like three or four in there that you asked.
One of them was the minimum, but I'd like that one. The age minimum out there?
The age minimum is 62 to join us. However, our average age, I want to say, is much more closer to 80. With our residents, we have a lot of older residents who have moved in and really are the fabric of that community. We even have some that are original residents still, not, not as many as we had in the past. But we still have some original residents that live there. And like I said, they just don't move for any other reason other than they can no longer live independently.
Have you increased rents over time, over the last few years?
We have implemented annual rent increases. I don't have that specific rent increase pattern at my fingertips. But we have made every effort to make sure that those rent increases are minimal. And we try very hard to make sure that we're not increasing the rents, you know, to exceed what their increases might be in their income.
I have to state, I just ran some numbers on what I have in the briefing paper. And if you don't get this extension of the pilot program, it comes out to approximately $7.10 a month that you'd have to raise on your tenants and rent. I don't find that to be quite substantial. And I'm really curious to see what you're actually raising the rent annually in the past anyway. So I, the amount you're talking about is, is pretty much nominal. I don't think it's going to break any seniors. If the rent is raised $7.10 a month to compensate your loss on this. Another point was made that was very good was people are already getting some sort of subsidy of some kind. I just feel that you as a private institution are pushing this over onto us and I don't think it's right.
Well, I can understand your concern because you have your constituency to work with. Again, I think that, that the partnering with private industry to maintain affordable housing within communities is vital. We have to be able to maintain the affordable housing to quality housing, right? We, we don't want affordable housing to be any less than what we would expect at a market property. I will say in terms of other subsidies for our residents, those, only about 45% of our residents, not even maybe 45%, get subsidies. All the others are living off of their life savings or their retirement funding or their social security. Not all of our residents receive, you know, Section 8 assistance or rental assistance from other sources. Just to help Betty.
There are a lot of grant opportunities at the state. Secretary Holt, I had a meeting with him a few weeks ago regarding this. And I don't know, you, you said you had not gone or you are not getting state funding and I'm not sure why. But they have a lot of funds and grant opportunities. I agree with Commissioner Boucher is that we're, people are already being subsidized. And now we're looking at subsidizing the business in addition to subsidizing the individuals when it is a nominal increase. So that, that's kind of where I'm leaning on this unless swayed otherwise.
I, I think we need to see the numbers here, you know, how many, what percentage of them out of 150? Or what has been the rent increases on those? How many, what number, what percentage going up? I, I kind of agree with Eric and add on this. We need to see more than this before I think we can approve it as a county.
So Betty, just a question for me. You started to say you were getting, was Conifer, is Conifer purchasing another set of apartments in Carroll or set of another area in Carroll or not?
Yes. So we do have another community that we purchased. It's, it's a USDA property of 29 units. We refer to it as Union Village. We just purchased that and did a substantial renovation on that property. In addition, we are doing new construction in Westminster. And that will be, I believe, 50 units of multifamily housing. And again, it will be restricted rents at the 50 and 60% AMI.
Okay. Does Conifer have an office in Carroll?
I don't know if our office is in Carroll. We have a regional office in Maryland that is in Columbia. That is our regional office. And then we have some satellite offices at our properties all scattered throughout Maryland. Which is where we have, you know, some of our supervisory staff work out of.
Okay. That was mainly a curiosity question on, on my part. That doesn't have anything to do with the decision here. I, I, I noticed that, that this agreement is good through June 30th of 2021. So we've already extended this a year in order to get more information here. What are we talking about timeline here? If indeed we did a little bit more homework to get, and I, I I kind of suspect that that's where some of my colleagues are going here. If indeed we were to get a little bit more homework accomplished, what are we talking about timeline here? Is there a make or break date before the 30th of 2021 that you guys need to have this in place? Or is, are, are we, are we looking at that date as the drop dead?
I don't know that we have a drop dead date. We again are appealing for the extension of the pilot so that we can make some long-term planning and some financial projections. But I don't know that we have a drop dead date. Patty, do you have any insight?
I think my only comment would be that, to your point, Betty, on the financial side of it is, you know, we, I think the effective date of the rent increases, potentially it's upon lease renewal, but it's, it's January 1, which is obviously three weeks from now. As far as the effective date in, in getting those rent increases for 2021. And, you know, we would likely, probably fairly quickly have to come back to the table to determine whether or not, you know, we want to do something different and push it to 2022 as well. do something different and push it to two thousand and twenty-two as well.
I have additional question. You have, I'm guessing apartment complexes in other counties, maybe in other states. Do you have similar programs with the other counties?
Yes, we have actually several, um, pilot agreements with counties, not only within other counties in Maryland, but in the other states that we do business in as well.
Okay.
I, I see our comptrollers on here. Uh, I, I, and I'm, I'm sure you just didn't randomly come in here, Rob. Uh, I, I think we need to hear from you perhaps on a, a little bit more explanation here as far as your shop is concerned, Rob.
Right, just heard your discussion there about, uh, timing on this and I'll just share. So generally we bill our property taxes on July one. Uh, when we have these kind of agreements, we, um, don't send an original tax bill, we adjust it then. So, uh, generally we are applying, uh, special agreements and tax credits like this during the month of July and rebuild them around August first. So that's kind of the timing, uh, even into that period of time. As long as the effective date was for, uh, the tax bill that began July first, two thousand and twenty-one. Um, you know, we don't have a particular deadline before then. Uh, and, and really even after that, I mean, property taxes are such that at any point I could apply this and either refund or adjust the bill.
Okay, so that's internal, but, but Patricia, you were saying from your, from your point of view, you, you, you would be, uh, it, it's going to be a little bit of a challenge for you if we don't make the decision within the next three weeks. Is that what I'm getting from you?
Well, I'm not necessarily advocating a specific deadline, but, um, you know, depending on the results of, you know, this meeting and how it comes out, we may have to revisit, um, the rent increases based on, um, you know, the results of this meeting or the outcome. So there isn't a hard, hard deadline, but it will, I think certainly impact, you know, how we look at the, the rent increases over the next, you know, several years.
Right. So just from my standpoint, a- at this point, I, uh, I'm, I'm having a little bit of an issue here making the decision today. And listen, uh, this is, is no disrespect to anyone. We, 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 we decided to extend this and have you guys come back and give us a briefing, which is, we, we appreciate that. But then this little thing called COVID hit and the, the, uh, you know, the mindset that we had on getting another briefing sort of pushed things as you can imagine and emphasis has been put on other things. So, um, I, I, I'd like to do, from my standpoint, I'd like to have a little bit more time to do a little bit more homework uh, on this to see exactly what it means before we make the decision. Now, I'm not suggesting that we can't even do that next week because we've got one more session, I believe, until the end of the year. Uh, but I, that's just my, my thoughts. Uh, I welcome other comments from my colleagues and I, I don't think, I don't think the delay, it doesn't appear to me that the, e- even if we delay it for a week, it's going to necessarily be a restriction, but I, I'd like the chance to get just a little bit, I'd like to do a little bit deeper dive with, with some, some, some folks before we make the decision today. That's from me. Uh, my colleagues, I don't know.
I, I agree with you, Steve. This is, uh, I think we need to look and, and get some numbers, uh, effects of this. I mean, how, how much does this mean per unit, per year or per person? Uh, we, we need to see some statistics on it.
Yeah, and maybe for me, it's because, uh, you know, in two thousand and four, things were certainly a lot different than they are today. Maybe that's what's got that little, that little light back here in the back of my head lit. Uh, because we all know how differently things were operating then as opposed to today. There's so many challenges. So, uh, listen, I don't want to, I don't want you all to get the, the, the feeling that we're not for extending this. I just, I think we owe it to ourselves and staff and, and everyone to just get that deeper dive to know exactly what we're doing here before we make that, uh, pull the trigger on this. So that's sort of where I am.
Did I hear correctly that the corporate interest is going to build additional senior living facilities in the county?
No, the, the new construction is not, the new construction property in Carroll County is not senior, it's multifamily.
Is that, is that the one up on Extended Main?
Oh, wow.
Is, is that, is that the complex that's currently under, under construction on Extended Main? Old Extended Main Street?
Ted, do you know where that is? I think that's the location it's. Your microphone is not working.
Ted, Ted's got that gear problem we all have. That, that little gear up in the right-hand side, Ted. It looks like a widget.
Upper right-hand side, yeah.
Looks, looks like a.
It looks like his microphone is on. Why don't you just text me?
Yeah, that, that, that's fine. I, I just, I'm curious. I think that's the one we're talking about here and it's.
Yeah, I believe it is the one that we're talking about, but, um, since we can't share up.
Okay, is it your intent then? And maybe I missed this and I'm, if I'm re-asking, I apologize. There's Ted. That's, that's the property Ted up on the Extend, old Extended Main, right?
Yes.
Okay.
There he is.
Okay.
Is it working now?
Yes.
You're working, okay, good, yes, that's cool.
Yeah, okay.
Serious, I don't know why I was acting up.
So that property and the Union, uh, Square, whatever you call property.
Union Village, yep.
Union Village, will both of those, will the, will the request for both of those be the same as this one? Are you going to do the same? Is it your intent to do the pilot programs there or you, what, I'm, I'm confused as to what Conifer's attempting here?
No, we're only speaking for Sunnybrook Apartments at this point for the extended use. Um, we are not requesting a pilot for the other two properties. We were able to put together a finance package without that pilot request.
Okay, alright, that helps. Okay.
Are, are the other two properties looking at subsidizing the residents in those apartment complexes?
So Village, um, the Village Apart, the Union Village Apartments are USA, USDA. So they get, those residents get a direct subsidy, um, very similar to section eight, um, complexes that are project-based. And the new construction will be a tax credit property. There will be AMI layers for multifamilies, so it'll be for working families. Um, so that will be rent restricted. Again, it'll be a fifteen-year initial, um, re- regulatory agreement with the fifteen-year extension. So it's a thirty-year commitment of affordability.
Okay, please, I mean, I'm trying to balance, where do we subsidize? Do we subsidize the business developing or developer that's making the complex, the apartments, the housing? Do we subsidize the individuals? Who has those responsibilities? And if it's being accomplished by the individuals through different programs, um, that's great. If it needs to be a combination, I think that's the most important is why does it? You know, that's what I want you to come back to us with is why do we need this combination approach? What are the projects, the capital projects that you're talking about? What is the significance of this pilot effort? If you don't get it, what, like Commissioner Boucher shared, what is the increase that would take place? Uh, for the individuals and would that then be covered by the subsidies that they're receiving from both state and federal? That's the, the theme of, I think, where, at least where I'm coming from.
Well, again, not all our residents in Sunnybrook Apartments receive other subsidies. So not all our residents receive rental subsidies from other sources. Um, I think Ted, you.
Yeah.
Go ahead. I was just going to step in and say, um, just so you're aware, only, uh, around thirty individuals in Sunnybrook actually receive, um, resources from our Housing Choice voucher program through our section eight program. And what, what the benefit is of what's, um, Sunnybrook is offering to some of the citizens that do not qualify, they're not income, income eligible for our Housing Choice voucher program. This allows them to be able to afford this housing. Um, and so I, I did want to just make a point that there are only about thirty individuals in there that, that are participating in our H, our Housing Choice voucher program.
Yeah, the society probably makes up about twelve percent of our revenue, of our income on the rental side.
Okay, okay, thanks. Thanks both, uh, Celine and Ted for your clarification.
Alright, what's the mindset here? Do, do, do we need, I, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to put a challenge on Conifer here. Let's be clear. I, I know, uh, Patricia, I, I hear your, 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 uh, your timeline. I understand that. I don't know that another week's going to, going to affect that. Uh, we really only have one more session left this year because unless we, we throw another one in on a, on an off Thursday, on a day other than Thursday. Uh, but what, I, I'm suggesting at this point that we hold off and put this back on our agenda for next Thursday, which is the, seventeenth, thanks, Chris, uh, the seventeenth? And make the decision then, allowing us to just get a, allowing us to do just a little bit more groundwork here before we make this decision. Would that be, uh, to my colleagues, is that, does that sound, uh, reasonable? That's, I'm getting a thumbs up from them. And Patricia, not to, to, and or Betty or Ted, not, not to, to delay this. What, is that reasonable for you folks to allow us this extra time period to make this decision? Are we good there with you guys?
Certainly, unless, Betty or Ted, you guys, um, you know, we appreciate you definitely, you know, taking a look at this and, um, you know, it's appropriate to take enough time to, that everybody is comfortable with the decision.
Okay, and.
I agree.
Okay, thank you. And Ted, I would assume you agree with Patricia. Why would you not agree with Patricia and Betty, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, that, that'll give us a chance to do just a little bit more groundwork here. And we very well may be in touch with, with, uh, with Conifer with additional questions as well uh, in this week time period in order to get to the best decision next week. So, uh, Celine, I think that's where we're going here. Uh, if you'll work with, with our folks to see that this gets put back on our agenda next Thursday, uh, and then we'll, we'll roll from there.
We will do that.
I'd really like to see what the rents have been over the last fifteen years and how much you've increased the rents each year. Because if you're coming to us telling us that if we don't do this, you're going to substantially increase their rents, I see that it comes out to seven dollars and ten cents. I would find that extremely disingenuous of you being opportunistic on this.
Okay, Celine, can you work and Danielle, can you work with Conifer to get? You, you guys have been taking notes, you're very good at this. So these questions that we've been throwing at Conifer, work with them to get these answers to us prior to next Thursday, please.
We will do that.
Okay. Alright, I, I, listen, Patricia, Betty, Ted, I appreciate you folks being on here today and we will see you next Thursday.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Bye.
Okay. Let's move forward here. Um, comprehensive case management and planning services for Medicaid, long-term services and supports solicitation through March thirty-first. Why are your title, agenda, agenda title so long, Celine? Can't they be like shorter or something? I mean, come on. Um, back to Celine.
Um, back to us, yes, they're, they're always lengthy. That, that said that we have time to regroup from our last presentation before we start as you read the long titles. So, um, so as you, as you noted, we are here, um, seeking approval for a three-month extension of our comprehensive case management and, and support planning services Medicaid of long-term services and support solicitation. Um, and I am here today with Gina Valentine, our Bureau Chief from, for aging and disabilities. And we are also joined by Roberta Lawrence, who I wanted to introduce all of you to. This is her first time before the board in her new role. She is now our Aging and Disability Services Supervisor. And she has come in, um, and she has hit the ground running and is doing a great job. She was previously one of our waiver case managers over in, in the program we are here before you today for. So we are excited to welcome her aboard. She's been with us since October in this new capacity. Um, and so welcome, Roberta. We, we call her Bobby.
Yeah, AKA Bobby. So.
Yeah, well, welcome aboard, Roberta. We have, uh, sometimes we have a little bit of an issue with people named Roberta. Uh, hopefully.
I can imagine.
Hopefully that will be smooth, you know, here, so, uh.
Can't have too many good Robertas around.
Okay, there it is. See, I knew, I knew you'd become chiming in there on that one.
We need one at least.
Yeah, right. So listen, we're glad to have you on board. Welcome aboard and we look forward to all that you'll bring to, uh, to us and, and the department over there. So thank you.
Thank you.
Celine.
Okay, so I'm actually going to pass this over to Gina to do the rest of the introduction of, of the solicitation and why we're here.
You're muted.
You're muted.
Thank you, sorry. So, um, thank you, Celine, and, and good morning, everyone. Um, as Celine said, um, that the Maryland Department of Health has invited, um, the Bureau of Aging and Disabilities to extend our, um, current solicitation provider agreement for an additional three months from January first, two thousand and twenty-one through March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Um, the current contract is, uh, set to expire, um, on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. Um, the, the services provided through this agreement include staff, our staff working in the home and community-based services programs to provide case management services, um, to individuals who are applying for and enrolled in, um, programs such as the Community Options Waiver, Community First Choice, Increase Community Services, and the Community Personal Assistance Services Program. Um, the focus of the, um, programs is to provide case management services and assist our participants with securing services to enable them to move out of, um, long-term care facilities and other institutions and remain safely in the community and to avoid, um, additional long-term care placements. Um, the renewal of this solicitation is typically for an entire calendar year, but Maryland Department of Aging, I'm sorry, Maryland Department of Health, um, they're still currently working on updating the solicitation. Um, so I'm confident that we'll be invited to apply again for the period of April first, two thousand and twenty-one through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Um, the home and community-based services programs provide, um, services to calling, qualifying individuals such as personal care, life emergency response systems, home-delivered meals, environmental assessments, adaptations, case management services, um, and nurse monitoring services. And, um, these are all Medicaid-funded programs. Um, individuals have to meet financial and medical requirements to qualify for the program. And our program currently has four staff members, um, which includes one program coordinator and three case managers. And the program continues to operate on a fee-for-service model. Um, and our staff members bill for allowable client-related, um, activities such as arranging for and modifying their services, um, making phone calls, um, emails, meetings with clients, um, communicating with providers and completing documentation. The projected budget for this program, um, for the, this time period of, of January through March, um, we, the estimated revenue is, um, fifty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. The county contribution, which is included and approved in our fiscal twenty, twenty-one budget is sixty-four, I'm sorry, five thousand, five hundred dollars for a total of sixty-four thousand dollars. So I'm going to, um, pass to Bobby to share some, uh, additional information about the program and some stats, um, related to the program.
Yes, thank you. Um, typically we have a cap of clients, um, at one forty-eight, but currently we are serving one hundred fifty-one clients. And we are anticipating that we will increase that cap, uh, throughout the next three months through COVID because we are at the point, you know, restricted from a lot of face-to-face visits. So, um, that being said, we're keeping busy. We are making lots of phone calls, lots of, when possible, virtual. So we are one of the only support planning agencies that typically does increase its cap. So that is going to happen. We typically average about one seventy-five clients per year, give or take. So that's kind of where we are right now with serving clients, very active with clients coming off the waiver registry. That seems to be working. So we are really getting a lot of feedback from that level one screen when people are at high priority and we are trying to get them. we are trying to get them assigned to us so we can assist them in that process and get the waiver services. I think that kind of sums up. Gina, did I miss anything?
No, no, you didn't. You know, I'd just like to also add that we work in great partnership with the Health Department for this program. And that's, that's part of the required process. There's assessments that clients have to have in order to come into the program and also have the readetermination for the program. So, but I, I think that covers everything. So, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Your expectation is after March that it will go for an entire year, correct?
It typically, yes, that's correct. It typically runs the solicitation on an entire calendar year. And so, again, Maryland Department of Aging, or Maryland Department of Health, I'm sorry, they, they are working on the solicitation to extend then beyond March thirty-first. And we've had this contract with them for a number of years.
And we have, our contribution is within our budget, correct, for that entire year?
That is correct. That's within, in our approved fiscal twenty twenty-one budget. And Debbie, if you want to jump in, I'm sorry.
Yes, it is in the budget for, for twenty twenty-one, the amount that we're, we have on the paper.
Okay.
I don't have anything else.
I'll make the motion that the Board of Commissioners approve twenty twenty comprehensive case management and support planning, solicitation extension, and acceptance of the funding.
Wow.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion and second. Any other questions? All those in favor? Inanimately approved. Thank you, ladies, very much. And again, welcome aboard, Roberta.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you.
You.
All right. By the way, stay tuned for the fundraising opportunity that Chris Swam is going to do. He's making T-shirts that says "You're Muted" on the back. And we're going to sell them and make huge amounts of dollars and fix our budget next year, gentlemen. Boom.
I'll suggest that in the meeting on Monday.
Well, the front should say "Check your gear, Will." And the back should say "You're muted."
With that on it.
All right, zoning text amendment for community solar engine, engine, energy generating systems. Tom Devilbiss, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm joined today by Ms. Brenda Denny, our Special Projects Coordinator, and I believe Laura Mathias will be joining us also, the Bureau Chief of Development Review. If you recall, September third, we gave a briefing to the Board of Commissioners where we presented a conceptual proposal to move forward with the text amendment related to limited development of community solar associated with remaining portions in the agricultural zone. We indicated that staff would be interacting with various groups and with the proposal, and then with an ultimate goal of going to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their review and comment. We did acquire your concurrence at that point in time to move forward. Since that time, we have interacted with numerous groups. And as a result of that process and as a result of what we did, we provided you at that September third meeting, which was an assurance that if we did find any significant changes to the proposal, we would return to you. Today, we're here to discuss a change in direction related to the parcel size of the remaining portions. So, what we ultimately hope to gain today is your concurrence to proceed forward with the change in that. And at this point in time, I want to turn it over to, to Brenda and, and Laura, because those are the two individuals along with Mr. Voight, Jay Voight, who interacted with these groups and, and got the feedback we did, which is resulting in our returning to you for, for an update. So, Brenda?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm hoping I can get these slides to advance here, so. It's not advancing.
Brenda, use your, use your wheel on your mouse.
It's not working. There we go. All right, so as Tom had mentioned, you had previously asked us to take the, the, these initial concepts out to a couple of the local interest groups, the Environmental Advisory Council, and then some of the local agricultural groups. And that's what we did. And as you know, the information is all available on a webpage that we have, the Community Solar Zoning Text Amendment page. So, we've also been getting comments and feedback from solar developers in the industry as well. So, basically, overall, the feedback from the ag groups has been that they don't want to see any solar in the ag district anywhere at all. However, if it had to be in the agricultural district, then they were suggesting that they would be more likely to support if larger remaining portions were used as, as opposed to the smaller remaining portions, and then have a permanent easement placed on the remaining land and on that larger remaining portion instead. As far as the solar developers in, in industry goes, they, the feedback from them was that they didn't feel that the flat-to-twenty acre parcels were suitable because it didn't give them enough flexibility for citing on, you know, suitably on a parcel. Wrong direction. So, what we are here today to, to suggest is, we currently have, as terms of location criteria, the proposal originally was to allow community solar on remaining portions that are between five and twenty acres, and then have the easement placed on the parcel after the solar facility is removed. So, based on the feedback, what we're proposing is changing that location criteria to remaining portions that are over twenty acres. And then have a, set a maximum area for the solar facilities of twenty acres, and then require a permanent easement be donated on the remaining piece of that remaining portion. So, you would have a larger area that would be placed under easement. So, if you look at the original proposal and then this, you know, revised concept that we're proposing, the original proposal had three hundred and forty-two parcels. And that was, you know, just almost thirty-six hundred acres that represented in those three hundred and forty-two parcels. The revised concept would be, include three hundred and sixty-two parcels. So, not very many different total number of parcels, but the acreage, because they are larger parcels, it would be nineteen thousand acres that would be potentially impacted by the proposal. And so, if you looked at a maximum of twenty acres per remaining portion, you would have a maximum of just over seven thousand acres that could be developed for solar, with a resulting almost twelve thousand acres that would be put into permanent preservation with easement. Now, you know, I do have to point out that this would be maximum, these parcels, even if they're eligible, aren't necessarily suitable for solar development. But, so there would be a whole lot less than that number that you're seeing there that would probably actually be placed in to solar use or an easement because of the suitability based on what the solar developers look for.
I have a question for you. Out of the potential acreage, what is the number of acres that are close enough to the, I think it's the phase-three line, it has to be close within half-mile to the acreage for it actually to develop the solar?
Let's see. That is just over fourteen thousand of those acres.
Is there fourteen thousand acres? Well, then it's, how come you've only got seven thousand, two hundred and forty of potential?
Well, the, the seven thousand potential are, if you took on all three hundred and fifteen parcels, if you took twenty acres out of them and put it in the solar, it would be roughly that amount. So, if you reduce the number of parcels that are, that nineteen thousand acres by the amount down to fourteen. You know, it, it corresponds to the number of parcels that, that are actually there in that buffer.
Does this still have the two-megawatt restriction on it?
Yes, it would. That, that's currently state law. So, no matter what, unless the state law changed, we would have that two-megawatt limit.
The two, and a two-megawatt limit, actually, I think it's a five acres per megawatt. Am I correct in that? Basically, is what we're looking at?
That's roughly accurate for the actual solar panels.
Right. So, what couldn't we include the original concept? I'm sorry.
It's more like
Go ahead.
Infrastructure, I'm sorry.
I say, why couldn't we include the original concept with the revised concept, put both of them forward? Because then you're, I'm just saying, we could have more acres. It would be possible. The original concept seemed good to begin with. I like this second concept as well. Why can't we just go with the both of those concepts?
We certainly could commit. So, Commissioner, you're talking about using acres that are five and greater than. So, there really would be, we could use any remaining portions, is basically what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, it's up to the, the person that owns the land whether they actually want to do this or not. But why not make it available to anything that's five acres or larger? Because five acres would give you one megawatt, and the most you could do in Maryland right now would be two anyway. And with all the restrictions, they can't be, can't be more than two, can't be continuous, can't be adjoining properties and all that stuff. It's, it's not like you're going to have solar fields everywhere, because Maryland's already put those restrictions in.
Right. I think what Brenda was going at, you know, the five acres, I mean, that's actually the panel size. But by the time they did all the buffering and did everything else, it would, it's going to be greater than the five acres that they actually would be putting into the solar. Like, if they brought in a site plan, it's going to be greater than the five acres, you know, that they're going to actually utilize for solar development. But, but we certainly could do that. I think the main thing we wanted to bring to you today was expanding it basically to just about all the remaining portions. And we got feedback from both sides, the ag sector and the solar industry, that that would be possibly the preferred choice of, of both of those entities, actually for somewhat different reasons, though.
I, I was at a lot of the meetings when this was brought up. And the, the concerns are, you know, they're, they're afraid this is going to be a segue into huge mega solar farms and on large acreages. And, you know, we have to make sure, I, I'm not opposed to this, this sounds pretty good. I wasn't opposed to the other one. But they're really concerned this is kind of a segue into, boom, now thousand-acre farms put together out here, we're taking productive ground out of production for mega farms, such as, I think Littlestown area has that issue, anyway. That's one area. Number two is the concern that people do not understand, you know, and Brenda, no, no offense here, but, you know, it's ideal that you put them, solar panels in. How do you maintain the ground under it afterwards? And people are talking about, you know, they're going to put pollinators in and all these other things. In reality, they turn into one woody mess with invasive trees and everything in about three years. And I think our extension agent even said, and I get the calls, what do I do with this? How do I get this under control again? And there's not an easy way to do that, very expensive proposition. So, when you do this, I think restrictions or restrictions, recommendations have to go with it. That, you know, control of noxious weeds and all kinds of things come in, Russian olive and all these over, overbearing fast-growing plants come in and make a mess out of this rather than a, a, a good idea. And, you know, people talk about grazing and things like that. Here, again, can be done, but it has to be handled and people have to work at it. You can't put the panels in and forget about them. There have to be, I guess, some kind of recommendations that go along with this, with it. I think it would make it more palatable to the agricultural community.
Well, Commissioner, to address your issue, this is just like any other commercial development. I want you all to consider this to be, this is commercial development. So, they're going to generate a site plan, they're going to have requirements that, that they have to meet. And so, what will happen, and I, I think I'd like to make this clear, this is a great opportunity, thank you, Commissioner Weaver, there's going to be work that the county's going to have to do to enforce this commercial site plan, just like we would any other. And in this case, with the, the amount of open space and the weed issue and the maintenance of all of that that you're talking about, Commissioner, you know, those issues, if we make them part of the site plan requirements, that's what we're proposing, they will become enforcement issues that will most likely be handled by our zoning office. So, I don't want to, I don't want to not, or I would be remiss if I did not say that this, by undertaking this effort, there will be, you know, up, there will be work that we have to do post-installation of these to make sure that they are complying with, with these requirements that, that we place there. So, that is one, one item when you move into this realm, that the county will have enforcement and oversight responsibilities that we will be, you know, tied to with these facilities.
I'd like to add that the way the law is written in Maryland, to, to address your first concern, Commissioner Weaver, you can't have over two megawatts continuous on these fields. So, that would be ten acres. And you can't have ten acres on my field if it's right next to your field. Can't be done that way. That's the way law is written in Maryland right now. So, you're not going to have hundred acres or whatever acre farms, because the way the law is written, it, you can't do it in Maryland. So, that takes that fear away. Unless the, you know, people down in Apple's want to change the law right now, I don't think there's any appetite to do that. I would like to see this go from, to take both concepts and put them together and move forward with that. That's what, way I would like to see it move.
I like this data. I think the, the push to expand solar county is from a corporate interest outside of our boundaries. And we have to ask ourselves, is the benefit that we gain from the solar energy worth the potential negative impact it's all have upon our number-one industry in our county that we're known for, and that's agriculture? We have to assess whether this is truly worth the expansion to offset and give a negative impact upon our ag business. And that's the question we have to answer.
No one has to accept this on their property. Each individual property owner will have the option of saying yes or no. And I also remind everyone that the state of Maryland is actually pushing to move solar forward, having more solar available. And I, from the, the last MAKO land committee conference call I was on, they were talking about, keep in mind that if we don't, that if the individual counties don't have places for solar to go, the state will come in and tell you where, where it should go. So, I think it, it helps us out. So, we have control over this if we do this kind of stuff on, on our own.
Yeah, Commissioner Fraser, that's a huge point. And for the last two years, that's exactly what I've been pushing was, I do not want the state to come in and tell us how to do it. And let's tell our own story and come up with ideas of where solar makes sense and where it doesn't make sense. So, absolutely, I, I hundred percent agree with you. My question, Brenda, is that, that last line, you know, the parcels are eligible but not necessarily suitable. Do you have a slide that shows what is suitable in the county? So, because if we look at it in this grand scheme, it could be pretty ugly. But if we look at it, actually, what is suitable, the proximity to where solar can be put in, plus the limitations of, of size, of what are solar, of what solar can be, that, you know, ten acres? Do, I mean, I think it would be much easier for us to see and understand and make the, a better decision on. I mean, I don't know if you have a slide like that or not.
No, unfortunately, we're not able to put together something like that. We did have a, a map on the original concept that showed the corridors where we think phase-three distribution lines might be. The utility companies won't provide that information. So, we use Department of Natural Resources information from their smart sighting online tool. Then
Yeah, and that, that makes sense. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, that, that did cover a good portion of the county when you created those one- and two-mile buffers from the pre-phase distribution lines. So that that did cover a good portion of the county when you created those one and two mile buffers from the preface distribution lines. But then the other suitability factors are that the solar developers need to look at aren't things that we can typically look at. So for one thing, the capacity on the actual distribution line, not only does the distribution line have to be there, you know, close by, but it also has to have capacity to handle the additional energy that's put into it. And um from my understanding with the size of that lines typically are, we, they would only hold maybe a a few additional solar facilities at two megawatts each. And some of them, such as in the Eldersburg area, are actually already full. So that that's one thing. And that's not something that we can map because we don't have that information and it would not be provided to us. And then there's individual site restraints too. For example, you know, the um steep slopes, the the direction that the sun is, um, you know, environmental constraints. And these are all things that solar developers have to look at on an individual basis when they first look at a property. So it's the, some of these additional suitability things are not things that that we can determine and map.
No, I understand some, I mean, but like you shared, some of the overlays are available. And some are readily available, some, you know, we have to kind of, you know, ask for and get more details. But whatever overlays we do have available, if we put them on top of each other, will then determine at least get to a a closer understanding of what is the suitability of properties that we're talking about when it comes to uh the ag parcels for solar. So that's kind of what I'm thinking. So, okay.
But the very least, we.
And I I I I agree with you and Dennis on this, where we need to uh uh go. But I want to do one, you know, as we move into this and Tom, if you get to take it to the planning and zoning, I think you need some representation from the ag community and when this is discussed. Right now, planning zoning really doesn't have any agricultural representation on it. And I think you need to have their input into this as what I heard from these various groups as you discuss it. Uh, so they have a total understanding of what we're talking about uh at this point. Ed, do you agree with that?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it can hurt to develop a task force and bringing in the ag commission or folks' representation to uh, you know, have that conversation with the planning commission. Yeah.
Yeah. And I agree, we have to set our own standards here and uh plan where this is going to go. I firmly believe that.
I would like to add that I'm talking to people in the industry because I've had a few uh phone calls and conference calls and with some people that are interested in developing community solar and have developed in other places, that the limitation is much more than what we're putting out there. Because they're telling me that they're looking at uh only half mile to a mile between the three, away from a three phase line. I'm actually sure what a free phase, three phase line is myself, but that's what they're telling me. Additionally, they're only, they would only be interested in putting one additional um commu- or one community solar project onto a a three phase line. So if the three phase line runs, I don't know how long, but there's only be one additional solar two megawatts going on to that line be- because of capacity for the lines. So they're telling me that it's it's very restricted where how many can go in Carroll County. It's not, we're not going to be overrun with this. But I do think they should have the opportunity to put them in where they can put them in with all the restrictions that are out there.
Okay, uh, just a couple of quick comments from me. I don't want to get too many cooks in the kitchen here with this. I think Brenda's already done a good bit of work with the ag community. Uh, I don't want to see eighteen people get on a phone call with planning and zoning. I think Brenda, if you can just pull in one or two folks from the ag, I I just the the longer we delay this, the more the state's going to be ready to come in here and and tell us where to put this. So I I just don't want to create another group of people that have to work on something and then give a report to planning and zoning because I, it appears to me that Brenda, you've already done that work. I I'm not disagreeing with you, Dick, that we need representation there. They can certainly be in on the call. But I don't think we need to create another group of people if we're, if if we are actively getting their input. So I I agree with you, Dennis. I think we should put the the original back in place too. The the and put both of those and move them forward. Because you you, the most important part part of this whole discussion was what you brought up, Dennis. And that is, if we don't do it, they're going to. I'd rather us do it than them, them being the state. Any, anything else, Tom?
No, sir. If that's, we certainly can do that and we'll be moving forward. We just wanted to make sure that we brought this because this is, you know, a change in what we we presented to you, a pretty significant change in the potential acres, the eligible acres. We want to make sure it's clear with you before we move forward, but we're certainly ready to move forward.
Okay. Dennis, it would be appropriate that you make this.
I'll make the motion to board of county commissioners, direct staff to proceed to planning zoning commission with both these options combined.
And I'll second. And this is going to take some time. Let's be clear. This isn't going to happen next week. And this isn't going to create solar panels in every ten feet on our agricultural properties either. That's the other thing to remember here. As you said, Dennis, this is going to be very limited based upon the parameters that are already in place. So and I just don't want folks to get the idea that we're throwing up huge solar panel displays everywhere. So, okay, any other discussion on this? All those in favor? One, two, three. Opposed? Okay, that's four to one moving forward. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Tom's still here because the next agenda item is approving the twenty twenty financial assurance plan based on the public hearing we had last week. Tom?
Yeah, that's correct, Commissioners. We're back before you after a week. Chris Hine is joining me here today, our Bureau Chief of Resource Management. And just as a kind of summary, we did an introduction presentation to the Board of County Commissioners on this topic on November nineteenth. Uh, all that information, the financial assurance plan and uh the presentation were all placed out on the county's website on the nineteenth. The public hearing for this was held on uh December third, twenty twenty. And we have not to to date uh gotten any comments or any feedback on the financial assurance plan from the public. So today we're here uh to request your approval permission to submit to the Maryland Department of Environment and to answer any questions you may have in your deliberations on this issue.
I think we've we've gone over this a bit. This is not our first uh time on this one. So I'm going to make the motion to board of commissioners approve twenty twenty F A P and direct staff to submit it to the M D E. Have I got those letters right?
Yep.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion and second to F A P, the M D E.
That don't sound right.
Well, okay, whatever. I was very careful, okay? All right. Anything additional on this one? All those in favor? Unanimously approved. Thank you for your work on that, Tom, Chris and staff.
Yes, Commissioners, if I could just take, I thank you very much. And I'd like to take just one minute. We really need to send out a big thank you and a a big uh assistance and cooperation for the Departments of Management and Budget and the Controller's Office. They were critical in in what we prepare here. We cannot do this alone. There's no doubt about that. Uh, it's just too compensated with the numbers and all. So we want to send out a big thank you to them for their cooperation uh through this whole process.
All right, thanks, Tom. Thanks, Chris. All right, next on our agenda is uh grant application and acceptance of the of an award for the Brynwood Stream Restoration. Tom?
Yes, Commissioners, this is a a restoration project that's related to our MPDS program. It's located uh in the Johnsville Road, Brynwood Hills, Carroll Square region of Eldersburg. Uh, this has been an ongoing uh problem in that area as as related to drainage, both um on common area and through a lot of people's properties. Uh, and the runoff and the drainage is associated with with a lot of Carroll County, you know, the roads and all. So today, um, we're here to request your uh permission to submit a grant. And I'll let Chris talk a little bit more about some of the details of that grant.
Sure, yes, good morning. So um, this is a cooperative project between the Bureau of Resource Management and the Department of Public Works. You may remember back in March, you awarded a design contract to Century Engineering in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars to design the project. The design has been going very well. Uh, we have taken the preliminary design to several of the citizens in the area and met with them to talk about it. And they've all been very receptive and very happy about the direction we're going. So at this point, we have a good engineer's estimate for the cost of construction and that estimate is one point six million. So what we're here to ask you today is permission to request fifty percent of the construction estimate for um from the Department of Natural Resources.
So why do you have one point eight million on the total cost with the county match of one million? Are we asking for eight hundred thousand or are you asking for eight hundred thousand from us or for a million?
So we're asking eight hundred, uh, so what we've included is the design um cost as part of the county match. So the construction estimate is one point six plus the two hundred thousand that we've already encumbered is the one point eight, and then we're asking for fifty percent of the construction.
Got it. I'll move the board of commissioners approve the submit, submittal of the grant application and acceptance award to the Department of Natural Resources, Chesapeake and Coastal Grants Gateway.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and second on this project. Any chance we can get more money out of the uh D N R Chesapeake and Coastal Grant Gateway people? Chris?
Well, so we've uh we've done a lot of work with D N R um with these grants. We've received a lot of money over the years. And what we've found is that if we ask for more than fifty percent, our chances of receiving the grant decrease substantially. So um this is kind of the sweet spot is the is a fifty percent match. It shows the county's commitment to the project.
Okay.
I have a question before we go, if that's okay. Um, on your, in the briefing paper says this is going to help with overland flow in various locations. Or does that mean that because of stream overflows, it goes, is that what we're talking about there or are we talking about water getting down to the stream?
We're talking about water getting to the stream. So this, that's the component that is the D P W component is the, are the drainage issues. So this project addresses both drainage issues and the stream restoration.
And ju- just if it's, could be quick, if it's possible, how are we addressing the drainage issues then? I'm not sure. I don't under, I don't have an understanding of that.
Sure, by we, by adding in closed storm drain systems. So adding in inlets and storm drain pipes to convey the water to the stream and get it off people's properties.
Gotcha. All right. Makes perfect sense. Thank you.
Gentlemen, would you happen to have a a map or a view of any sort that you could put this up so I could conceptualize where it's at and where this works?
Sure, hold on just a second. There we go. Is it, is that displaying for you all?
Yes.
So um, I apologize, it's very small on my screen, so I um, um, it's tough for me to see. But um, to the the southeast portion of the of the map, there's some red lines. Those indicate the proposed storm drains. Those storm drains then tie into the circled green area, which is the stream restoration portion. And Johnsville um road is located in the southeast corner of the of the map.
And that's right across, Mr. From Eldersburg Elementary is right across the road there from right adjacent to Johnsville Road.
Colonel, if you go outside on your deck and wave, I think we could see you in this map.
Not not quite. I'm on the uh south side of twenty six. This is on the north side of uh twenty six Johnsville. Um, and yes, it's right across from Eldersburg Elementary.
Thank you. That was most helpful.
Sure, happy to do so.
All right, I got a motion. Did I get a second?
Yes.
Yep, I got a second. Any other comments or questions on this project? All those in favor? unanimous. Well done. Thank you on that one. We'll look forward to the progress. Yep. All right, uh, next up is uh a grant application and acceptance for uh repair and buffer plantings. Tom?
Yeah, Commissioners, this is a, this is a program that we have been involved in for quite a number of years and been extremely successful at getting money. Uh, and our folks are just uh top of the line at getting this done uh with planting trees on uh adjacent to streams and in wetland areas and all. So I'll let Chris explain it to you. But again, this is one uh that we've been extremely successful in getting money and getting the trees and all planted, getting the money distributed also. Chris?
Sure. So um, this is the same grant um program that we just talked about. But in this case, it would be for tree plantings. And I have a map showing the area that we're talking about. This is adjacent to the um Carroll Commerce Center. This is an area that is currently being maintained by the Bureau of Facilities. And we have been talking with them and they're very supportive of planting trees here because in the long term, this will reduce the the maintenance cost um in in the, in that area. So we're looking at approximately five acres of trees to be planted. And um the forty two thousand dollar request, grant request would cover the installation and first year of maintenance. And then the county match that we are indicating is for years two through ten uh maintenance to get the trees established. And at that point, the tree should be well established and maintenance costs should um, routine maintenance costs will go away.
Okay, questions for Chris or Tom?
Is this part of the park process in that area? Uh, isn't there a cut through or don't we have a area that the park is using near this?
Yes, so there um Recreation and Park constructed a trail from the Westminster Community Pond into the Autumn Ridge subdivision. And so the, this planting would be on either side of that trail.
Chris, can you run your cursor on the trail?
Yeah, can you see my cursor?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so here is the Westminster Community Pond. And then this is the trail that runs towards the Commerce Center and then through the uh the property we're talking about and into the Autumn Ridge subdivision. And so the planting would be in the green areas. We would not be planting where the trail is. And we would not be planting where the sanitary sewer easements are for the sewer lines that run through this area. And if you're wondering about this spot over here that's off by itself, this is what we call the Lowry Pond. This is an old farm pond that uh provided a small amount of stormwater management. That pond is currently being filled because it is no longer needed due to the Willow Pond construction work we're currently doing. So after we're done filling it, what we would propose to do is plant trees on it and let it go back to natural.
I I thought that's where Commissioner Wamp's all put my body.
I need a deeper area.
Yeah, yeah, let me know before you get it completely filled, will you, Chris? All right.
I'll make, yep, I'll make the motion to board of county commissioners approve this middle of the grant application and accept acceptance of the award of Department Natural Resources Chesapeake and Coastal Brands Gateway.
Second.
All right, any other questions on this one? All those in favor? And that's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Misses, thank you so much for your time today.
Good, both very good projects. Thank you, guys. All right, next on the agenda is stormwater drainage system pipe repair rehab at the Village Green subdivision. And I see Jim Cook and Jeff Castaway who just disappeared. Jim, you got this one. It's on you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. The uh, the Department of Public Works Bureau of.
The, the Department of Public Works Bureau of Roads Operations is seeking approval to use a term contract to complete and repair the rehabilitation of a failing stormwater drainage system in Village Green subdivision. A portion of the system was replaced in October this year using a traditional method because of the deteriorated beyond the parameters of repair. Now that the remainder of the system is, needs to be repaired, is approximately 1,673.39 feet, ranging in diameter of 15 to 30 inches. We will be repairing and rehabilitating using the cure and place fiberglass lining process rather than a traditional replacement method. The quote was submitted by Pleasance Construction Inc. For this project is $180,332.50. Pleasance Construction Inc. has a term contractor which was competitively bid and awarded in place with the county and funding for this work is available. No permits are required for this work and all roads will remain open to traffic during construction activity, reduced to a single lane using flagger operations when needed and returning to two-way traffic during the non-working overnight and weekend periods. Estimated time to complete this project is 12 to 14 working days weather permitting.
Alright, questions for Jim on this one? Everybody know where this is?
I, I know, whose district is this in?
He knows who's it is. Commissioner Boucher's district.
Alright, I move that the board of commissioners authorize the Department of Public Works to utilize a term contract with Pleasance Construction Inc. For $180,332.50 to repair rehabilitate the failing stormwater drainage system in Village Green subdivision.
Second.
Okay, got a motion in second. Any other questions? All in favor?
Am I getting a tour of this?
We'll take you through it.
Yeah, yeah. Is that before we bury you ever at the, behind the pond or after, I don't know. Alright, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner.
Thanks Jim, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for being on Kathy, good to see you, bye. Alright, Bixler Church Road culvert replacement. And there is our bureau chief in engineering, Chris, good morning.
Good morning, I think Mike's going to start.
Oh.
Good morning Commissioners, don't worry about me.
Sorry Mike, morning Mike.
Morning, yep, we'd like to request your approval for the, uh, for the contract for the construction of the Bixler Church culvert replacement to Kibler Construction, the amount of $482,722.25. County went out to bid and received six bids and Kibler was the lowest.
Okay, Chris?
Thank you. Bixler's church structure was built in 1973 and based on federal highway's current structural rating criteria, it was rated in August to be in serious condition. It's been on in our annual inspection ser, series for several years and it's currently posted with weight limit restrictions. Over the last several years, we've done several mitigation measures, tried to extend the life of the structure. The current structure exists, consists of two corrugated steel pipe arches and will be replaced with two-cell precast box culvert structure. In order to complete this work, the roadway will be closed to all traffic and detoured using adjacent roadways. Kibler Construction has completed our two most recent structural replacements, most recent one being Hollingsworth Road and they've indicated that they're ready to start work on this project. This structure is eligible for federal aid with the county being responsible for 20% of the cost of the replacement. Any questions?
Where, where is this on Bixler Church exactly, Chris? How far off, is it off the deep run or?
No, it's just north of 496, just up from the church.
Oh, it's on that end of it, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
We were, we were waiting for the 496 project to be done before we closed this roadway.
Okay.
You said they're ready to start construction now, does that mean like in the winter they're going to do this or they're waiting for spring?
We have a stream restrictions of March to May, so they'd like to get in before then and get the stream relocated so they can work during that closure time.
Okay. Okay. I'll move that we award the contract for the culvert replacement on Bixler Church over Big Pipe Creek to Kibler in the amount of $482,722.25.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion in three seconds, all those in favor?
I think it's going to pass.
I think it's going to pass, I think, yep it did, unanimous, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Okay. That's not bad. We regrouped and got to the end of our agenda in pretty decent time. Open admin, well, let's do the closed minutes first. We, everybody got a copy of the summary of the closed minutes from the December 3rd date and I'll need a motion to accept those closed minutes.
I move that we accept the minutes from closed from that date.
Second.
December 4th.
December 3rd.
3rd.
December 3rd.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, thanks, thanks for, thanks for repairing your motion Commissioner Weaver. I've got a motion in second to accept these minutes, all those in favor? Okay, got that, alright. Do I have, before I go into open admin or agendas, do we have any public comment, Chris?
Yes, I believe we have a caller on the line, can you please speak up and name your, give us your name? Caller on the line? Otherwise, noon is caller number two. I guess they're just joining us to listen in.
Okay, alright, last call for that. Can you say last call for a caller, I guess you can, last call for the caller? Alright, hearing nothing. What do we have for open admin? Any, anyone have anything for open admin? Alright, hearing nothing at this point, let's roll down through the agendas real quick. The week of December the 14th, Monday the 14th, Commissioner Frazier will be speaking to Cub Scouts at Westminster United Methodist Church, that's at 7:00 PM. Tuesday the 15th, planning and zoning, 9:00 AM virtually, Commissioner Rothstein. 1:00 PM, Department of Planning Work Session, we have, that's all of us, next Tuesday. Wednesday the 16th is the Carroll Community College Board of Trustees meeting, that's at 4:00 PM virtually, Commissioner Weaver. Thursday the 17th, we go into open session, our typical COVID talk. We are getting a comprehensive annual financial report from Comptroller's Office, Behavioral Health Advisory Council and Senior Uppiwood Policy Group Discussion. And that's all that we have right now, but we already added an agenda item from today, so that will be changing. At, on Friday the 18th, it is the annual MAKO Business Meeting and the installation of officers. Commissioners, myself and Commissioner Rothstein will be attending, that's at 10:00 AM. That is like the culmination of the winter conference that we typically would be at Cambridge in all those beautiful Christmas decorations and fine food at that facility. So light up your Christmas tree at home and join us 10:00 AM for the installation of officers where I'm honored to be put back on the board of directors again for the Maryland Association of Counties. Saturday the 19th, we have wreaths across America and we already have several folks listed as to where we're going. I'm going to be at Pleasant Valley. Ed, Commissioner Rothstein's going to be at the Meadow Branch Church of the Brethren. Commissioner Boucher is going to be at St. Paul's Lutheran Cemetery in Union Bridge. Commissioner Weaver, you're going to be?
At Western Chapel. Deer Park is not having their ceremony this year, but I will be at Western Chapel that day.
Okay. And Mr. Frazier will be bouncing about. And Commissioner Frager, Commissioner Frazier does have the podcast for that week. Alright. The week of December 21st, absolutely nothing now. Department of Planning Work Session, we have that scheduled for the 22nd at 1:00 PM. We'll be doing that and then obviously that's a week that is typically not a whole lot going on due to the fact that on Thursday and Fri, Thursday and Friday, we will be closed for the holidays. And Commissioner Boucher will be doing his Grinch podcast that week.
That is a good idea.
Okay. That's all that we have for agendas. Anything for open admin, last call on that, Roberta, do you have anything before? And Roberta is shaking her head no. So with that.
I lied. Sorry.
What?
Very important, each year, this, at the end of the year, you need to appoint the tax collector for the next year. So it's been Rob Burke for a long time, so you'd like to reappoint Rob Burke as our tax collector so he can do your work for you in calendar year 21.
Make the motion to reappoint Rob Burke as tax collector for 2021.
Second.
Alright, motion in second to make Rob Burke the tax collector. That, it seems like there should be a better title than, because that's such a, sort of a negative term.
It doesn't seem like a popular job.
Yeah.
Be good-looking tax collector, how's that?
Okay, that helps a little.
In some states, they're elected officials.
Yeah, right. Okay. Alright, all those in favor? That's unanimous, congratulations, Rob Burke.
Sure, I'm sure he's thrilled.
Yeah.
Thanks, that was it for me.
Okay, alright. We will be, we're also going to be seeing some changes here and we'll discuss those at next week's, in, at next week's open session as well as to where, what the responsibilities will be for the five of us moving into 2021. With that said, I need an, a motion to go into closed for board and commission appointments.
So moved.
Okay, I'll second it since no one else wants to. I mean, you all are so excited about boards and commissions, I mean, come on.
No, 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 you don't need closed for boards and commissions, you just need to recess.
Oh, we don't need to do that?
No.
Okay.
We're drawing a motion.
Part of administrative stuff.
Okay. Alright, is that why, is that why Tim suddenly appeared? Okay.
Have a good idea to have your attorneys swoop in like that.
Yeah, that's all, that's always, yeah, okay. You know, I, I don't think I've ever gotten that right in the two years that I've been. Good luck to, Ed, good luck trying to get that right. I'm sure you'll get it right out of the gate, man, so there you go. Alright, then I guess I need a motion to adjourn.
Right.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Alright, got a motion and second to adjourn. A reminder to everyone, we will see you next Thursday. And let's remain vigilant ladies and gentlemen as we continue to see the numbers go in the wrong way here. Keep in your thoughts and prayers, all those that are working hard on our front line. With that being said, all those in favor of adjourning? Okay, we'll see you next week, have a safe weekend everyone, supposed to be a nice weekend. It's a great opportunity to get out and support the restaurant industry with outside dining. Alright, Chris, we'll wait on you, we are adjourned and let us know when we are off the air.